... to have some time as they go into the actual formal process.
Are we about to take a non-mine binding vote to get that settled?
I would not call it a vote, I'd call it a straw poll.
If anybody has had a discussion on the Finance Committee amendments, if not, the next ones are the Finlayson-Kirby amendments.
Actually, I was hoping we could get into it with the City Manager a little bit about the specifics of the amendments. I know you had some thoughts after they came out of the Finance Committee, how we should sort of think about them and whether we should at the full council, offer all of them.
Maybe it would, perhaps it would work better if we took the amendments one at a time, I think.
Sure.
And then opened it up for discussion, then we could talk about either individually or together for the Finance Committee amendments at least, you know, what options may exist relative to funding.
Sure.
So there was, there was one amendment to the CIP that had to do with sidewalks. We finally, the total amount of the capital improvements for sidewalks would be six hundred and seventy-seven and some odd thousand, of which much is funded by internal staff work. So we'd want to see the sidewalk improvements shown as an item in the CIP, but the increase in the mayor's budget would be only two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which would be capital funds that would go to an external contractor for sidewalk repairs. The rest would be done internally.
Alderman Budge?
I agree with Alderman Arnett that this is a topic that we need to discuss, but it's not one of the Finance Committee amendments. And I was going to raise the subject up as, what about the amendment that isn't there, which is the sidewalk question?
It is in the report.
Yeah.
Amendment number one. If you go into the text itself.
I'm looking at oh thirteen sixteen Finance Committee amendments, one through three, period, general.
But if you go to the Finance Committee report.
I do, but I agree with Alderman Budge, it's not listed directly under there. But it is in there and we'll make sure we get to it.
And, well, it has a, it has a budget component as well as a CIP component.
Correct.
Sort that out.
Director Miller?
Thank you. I don't want to belabor the discussion relative to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar discussion is the funding of the six hundred or the sidewalk fund itself would remain the same. What would be happening is that the CIP itself would be amended to reflect a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar inclusion to, for information purposes, because that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is also part of this funding, is capital versus operating. So it's more of a presentation, it doesn't change the budget in any, the operating budget in any respect, and only puts two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the CIP budget for informational purposes.
Actually, doesn't it put all of the sidewalk repair in and then under sources? The, there's a source for two hundred and fifty or two hundred and sixty is the amendment that says capital, and then the other would get the internal staff source?
Yeah, the two hundred, on the CIP itself, there would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in the expenditures for sidewalks, and the source of fundings would be other, which is PEGO. So it would be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar PEGO amount. So again, the operating budget, no change. The only change would be is a inclusion of two hundred and fifty on the capital program. And again, the rationale or the thought process behind that was because of the six hundred and seventy thousand dollars of expenditures, two hundred and fifty of that was deemed capital in nature.
Well, what concerns me about the operating budget is the six hundred and eighty thousand dollars that is being taken out of fund balance, taken out of reserves to fund the sidewalks. And it's, to me, entirely secondary question whether or not two hundred and fifty of that shows up in the CIP. And that's the missing amendment that I'm, that the Finance Committee talked about in their report.
And it is in the report.
Don't have, it's not listed in their amendments.
Certainly there was, it sounds like the document that was put together hasn't, because it was shown in one place, but this is all sort of inside baseball stuff. The question is, we know that the Finance Committee amendment was to take, instead of using current year money, last year money in the next budget, to fund sidewalks to try and pay for it in the current year, was, was the gist of that, because it was about trying to use an ongoing expense should have ongoing revenue, right? Instead of borrowing from.
If I may.
Reserve. So I guess I'm curious to have a discussion about that, and not really the, you know, who put together the paperwork, but.
Yeah, there's a amendment to reduce the funding coming as a source of funds, so reduce the general fund operating revenues by six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. That's six hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred dollars being transferred from fund balance. So to eliminate that. The impact of that would be the revenues would be short, six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. So that begs the question relative to how to balance that budget, balance that piece of the budget.
Exactly. So the question for, I guess, for our colleagues and for the staff, I mean, obviously that was done for a reason and the mayor's budget was put in that way. And the Finance Committee and the FACT's view was that by doing it that way, it, it sort of allows you to paper over this year, but you have the same problem next year and you have the problems in the future. And shouldn't we be making the harder choice to figure out how to make that a durable source of revenue for that? Especially if we ever want to do more sidewalks, because clearly we know there's lots of demand to do more of that repair. I guess, I guess that's the debate I'm interested in having with our colleagues and with the administration about why it was done that way, why maybe the Finance Committee got it wrong, and our reading of how to fix it. So, I mean, Mr. City Manager?
With respect to the recurring nature argument, I think you could argue that sidewalks and how, and how you're going to fund them and how much you're going to fund them, or if you're going to fund them at all, is, is an annual decision that you make. If you accept that premise, then there would be nothing untoward about taking the savings from FY15 and applying it to this year's appropriation for sidewalks. You may change during the course of the year how you wish to handle sidewalks in the future, which would dictate funding as part of how you wish to handle it. But I think for this coming fiscal year, not to be particularly argumentative, but it's a legitimate use of the savings that we incurred in FY15 to use for sidewalks, again, if you accept the premise it's not necessarily a recurring expenditure for the next fiscal year. So.
The accounting is correct. It's the source, it is the decision to use fund balance that is the issue. We had quite an extensive presentation before the Finance Committee on fund balance and looked at the potential problems that using fund balance over time would cause, but I think the overriding point for me was, we've not made a, we, the council, have not made a policy decision about using fund balance. And we haven't even decided what the right level of fund balance is. And there were several different options. We could run the existing fund balance down to as low as two million dollars, at which point if it were considered two million dollars, then a six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar hit on two million dollars, quite a significant hit. But we have not been funding things out of fund balance in other budgets, and so this was a departure from budgeting process that we've been used to. And it may well be that we have more than enough fund balance, we have sufficient fund balance. I was struck by the discussion from the financial advisors, and it was a discussion that went on at the FACT, that dipping into fund balance is the beginning signal of financial problems. That, in fact, is what we did when we had the big debacle back in 2009, 2010. We virtually eliminated all fund balances. We're not doing that here, clearly, but we are starting down that path again. And so for my part on the Finance Committee, I felt that we needed to not do this, or we have to come up with a specific policy about level of fund balance and when things can come out of fund balance, as opposed to being supported by increases in revenue.
Absolutely wouldn't disagree. The only point I think I would make, if we would have, at the end of last year, said, all right, we're going to take X amount of dollars of the FY15 surplus and put it in the sidewalk revolving fund, boom, we wouldn't be having this particular discussion. So it's almost semantic thing, if you will, whether it was fund balance or whether it was savings or whether it was, you know, could have been dedicated money when the, the reversion to, to the fund balance occurred. But it's strictly, obviously, a policy decision for the, for the council.
But it's more striking in this budget because the planned surplus in this budget is one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. If the planned surplus was a million dollars or something like that, something akin to the surplus that we've had in the past, then you would say, well, but you're planning a healthy surplus and the surplus is your buffer, because never, things never end up the way you budget them. So, but you're covered. Here, we're not covered. So we're definitely lowering in an absolute sense the level of the fund balance.
And I believe in FY15, we didn't budget eight hundred thousand dollars in fund balance either. That eight hundred thousand dollars was a result of specific savings efforts that we made during the course of the year, which we'll go to do again this year and this year. So I don't know that just because there is revenues over expenditures and the bottom line in any given year, that, that necessarily constitutes an appropriation to fund balance. But again, that's something that we could discuss relative to overall discussion of what fund balance should be.
Well, I mean, you are quite candid in your statement, Mr. Mayor, that eight hundred thousand dollars was coming out of the past surpluses. That's fine, I appreciate the candor, actually, but I think that's a policy decision that we get to weigh in on, and I don't think we, we've made a policy decision. And so the correction that was offered by the Finance Committee is, until we make a finance, I mean, a council policy decision, we shouldn't be taking money out of surplus.
No, I think that's a fair comment. And certainly in my three budgets, we've never actually gone into the fund balance or savings and pulled money for this. I think what Tom Andrews alluded to earlier is, this is money we saved from this year, so it's sitting in an account before we put in fund balance, we can put it anywhere we want. Certainly not my intention to drain down the fund balance, but the larger philosophical question, maybe the Finance Director could help us on it, is what, what do the bond rating agencies view as a healthy fund balance? You know, to a point, if you had fifty million, a hundred, two hundred million, is enough money going to satisfy them? I think if you look at our ratio of fund balance, the budget versus the counties, I think we're in a much healthier position. But you're right, we still, we still need to sit down and come up with a number, twenty-five, thirty, forty, whatever that is, and work towards it. Alderman Budge?
Yeah, I look at this from a more philosophical point of view, budgeting philosophy. And that is that I don't think it's wise to ever spend one-time surpluses on recurring annual expenses. To do so is to build into the budget an inherent structural problem, because you've got a program going that you have no idea how you're going to fund it in the future. And if we have an eight hundred thousand dollar surplus, I'd be happy to apply it to some one-time expenses that may be in our budget, or to some one-time capital expenses, like cornhill.
Yeah.
But not to an ongoing program like roadways and pipeways and streets and sidewalks.
I certainly understand that. I think sidewalks are just one of the programs that, you know, having a three-hundred-year-old city, it's always going to grow, so I almost view it as a one-time boost to that to help out the residents. But I certainly understand the principle that you bring up. Mr. Andrews?
Just, just, the point, though, if we would have taken that eight hundred thousand dollars and put it into PEGO, capital, and taken the six hundred out of PEGO capital to do sidewalks for this year, it would be the same, it would meet your criteria, I think.
So it's almost the same. Aren't we supposed to be putting half of our surpluses into a capital reserve fund?
Last year, I believe last July, we passed a resolution, I believe, to put fifty percent in the PEGO, and we also put seed money in of five million dollars, of the PEGO. So, again, arguably, we're taking six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars of that five million dollars and using it for a PEGO program. I think the point here being said is that there are, conceptually, if you will, going back to an original comment that Tom said was, sidewalks, although it's a ongoing program, we, we can put, because it's a revolving fund, if we can reduce funding next year or we can suspend funding for a one-year period, unlike other areas of the budget where that may have more critical ramifications. So the intent was and is to match up one-time revenues to one-time PEGO-type expenditures. There was no intent of taking one-time revenues and putting those to an ongoing program. We were, because that was, quite frankly, some of my concern, that we didn't want to embed a structural deficit by using one-time revenues, one-time, I mean, with multiple, multi-year expenditures. So, but to the mayor's early comment, what are healthy fund balances, where should we be, to Ross's observation relative to, if, if you look at the, not just the general fund fund balance, but all fund balances, general fund is very healthy, no question about it. When you start adding different funds to that, such as the market and the harbor fund, which we're pulling in today, possibly transportation, et cetera, et cetera, on a citywide basis, there's more pressure, if you will. The, the whole fund balance question, if you will, is, does the city have a plan? Is the city managing to that plan? And last year, we adopted a policy, put five million dollars in, the, as the seed money, half of the fund balance, budgeted fund balance goes to that capital program. This is a capital, because it does extend the useful life of the asset. So it meets the conditions, if you will. So I would say that, yeah, we're, we're within those four corners of using the revenues for the expenditures. But to everybody's concern, that we, as we move forward, that we manage it and we're not pulling it in as a, for lack of better words, a plug, okay? I think this is a well-thought-out process where revenues are going to appropriate expenditures, and that is going to be managed on an ongoing basis per the policy. And again, like everything else, we have to manage it, and we have to manage it tightly, in making sure that we stay within the four corners to the concerns that we need to maybe improve our policies. I think we always can improve our policies, no harm, no foul with that. But, so again, just a structured, managed process as we move forward. I'll get off my board.
Alderman Piper?
I take a chance, take a, take a shot at trying to translate that into English.
Yes, English.
So presumably, those, the new series of guidelines that we put in place and staked with the five million dollars will allow us, over time, as we, budgets roll on the next year or two, whatever, whatever, at the end of those years, when the budgets are cleared out, a year and a half later, you will see contributions of fifty percent of whatever that total is to continue to grow this pot, right?
Correct.
So the challenge is, and then that is only available for one-time capital programs.
Correct.
And you're saying, sort of within that context of where we're headed for that, using this money, even though it's not going to pass through that series of steps, it's, it's sort of in the same vein?
I, I, again, I believe it's within, I think, the, in my mind, you know, the fact that, you know, fund balance is tight this year, and if we do have any unforeseen expenditures, the only safety net, if you will, is the four hundred thousand dollar reserve, in the operating reserve, and we're fund balanced. We don't have a cushion that we historically have had over the last few years, that we're budgeting money to go into fund balance. But I, I think the, the reality is, you know, that the budget before you, and this line number specifically, was thought out so that it's, it is a match between one-time expenditures and one-time revenue sources, that it wasn't using one-time revenue for ongoing expenditures. There's a direct correlation of what we're using it for.
Okay. So I mean, I guess from my perspective, on behalf of the Finance, I mean, I'm not, I'm not interested in, I mean, partially, I want to take all these ideas of the four things that we've talked about and get your sense and see what our colleagues' sense are. I'm not interested in offering amendments, they're just going to lose. And if the reading of it is that you feel that, all of you feel that this is sort of with, what was done in the mayor's budget is well within these walls and of, of sort of these principles, and we're headed in that direction, and the FACT sort of got it wrong, then I'm sure that's where the council will end up. But I'm just, I'm curious to see what everyone else is thinking is about this debate, so.
Well, we know what Joe's.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you, Mayor. If I heard you right, you were suggesting that the important part of your analysis is that the city has a plan and is following that plan. I wasn't quite catching how you were saying that we're, where is the plan? I'm not aware of what the plan is, and then obviously, if I'm not aware of what the plan is, I'm not sure how we're sticking to it.
Last year, there was a, I believe, resolution, not a warrant, but a resolution, to adopt a policy where fifty percent of fund balance goes into a capital PEGO. And that there was a five million dollar seed money, transferring money from the general reserves to a PEGO fund balance. And that transfers out of that would need approval, which this budget would, would reflect, or does reflect. So the plan, if you will, is that we're using PEGO dollars for capital expenditures, all right? And this six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars or the expenditures out of the sidewalk revolving fund need to be used to extend a asset useful life, okay? This is maintenance, okay, but it's extending the useful life of these sidewalks, so, and it's, so we're using capital expend, or capital funds, PEGO funds, for lengthening sidewalk lifespans. So that in itself, there's a correlation or a match, however you want to say, that we're using PEGO dollars or capital dollars for capital expenditures, or PEGO. So that's what I was referring to, that we're staying in, within those four corners relative to purpose and use.
Right. If there's no other discussion, we can move on to the other three amendments. I guess we should do with the policy thing, do we want to take a straw vote on each of these as we go along?
I think yes.
Okay.
I don't see how to.
I guess, Hillary, do you want to call everybody around the room and we'll say if we're, so I guess the question is.
Sure.
I think one at a time. So the question is, if you support the Finance Committee's recommendations of not taking the money out of fund balance?
Alderman Budge?
Yes.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Aye.
Alderman Littman?
I support the notion of moving the funding for fleet purchasing into the operating budget, but I.
We're going to.
Yeah. But want to see the second half, so.
Sure.
It's a cautious yes.
Sure.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah.
Piper?
Always a cautious yes.
And Alderman Arnett?
A cavalier yes.
And Mayor Panalevi?
So yes as well. So, following up to Alderman Littman's question, the next one is returning the funding of fleet purchasing in the amount of four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So open up for discussion.
So I would just say, yeah, we had this, this came up in the context of the debate and the, and the, again, the issue is, you know, should we, when we built this whole system over the last couple of years, about how to, you know, not only sort of maintain our vehicles in a smarter way than we have in years gone by, but also how to sort of purchase them and pool assets, and we've started funding that, and we've made some progress on that over the last couple of years, taking a year off. Is that a wise decision? Is that, in the context of how other cities deal with this, is that an okay move? And so it was sort of a question that it seemed like it was backsliding. So that's sort of where, where we came at it, but I'd be curious, you know, the folks who are more closely involved in this, how they look at it.
The thought process was to take a one-year hiatus, while we investigated what other options there may be out there in terms of vehicle leasing, maintenance, and what have you. We are exploring that actively as we speak. In fact, we'll be meeting with one potential vendor next week in some detail to, to learn what would be involved in that kind of arrangement. I think we'll be prepared to make a positive recommendation, one way or the other, to council within the next few or four months. And if we decide to go one way, that's fine. If we decide to keep what we have right now, then we'll have to deal with the expense in the FY18 budget.
Can I ask this question, just to finish my thought? Is there, Director Gerald, is there, I mean, are there places in our, our fleet where there's not redundancy, where if you have one particular vehicle goes down, and we can't wait till the next fiscal budget, we have to go out and buy something? I mean, does that happen, or is that not, or is our, our fleets across all departments built in a way that you could, you could suffer a bunch of cars, a bunch of vehicles that won't be working?
Right.
But you're not going to need the money to buy?
Yeah. David Gerald, Director Public Works. No, we, we have backup reserve vehicles for all of them, so we have the capability of doing that. And just as, you know, as the guy that's responsible for the fleet and keeping it up, I would normally be very concerned about this, because, you know, as, as you don't update the fleet, you just get further and further behind. But I think that this Zipcar idea, or something along those lines, is a very promising way to, to do what we would be doing with this, with this fleet replacement money, and that's replace the oldest vehicles. That's what Zip would do as well, they would replace our oldest ones. The ones that we have that are still in good shape, that are well-maintained and that still operate, would stay as city vehicles, and it's only when they get over their service life that Zip comes in and replaces those, and then we put those on a different basis. So I think that this is a worthwhile initiative to look at how this might play out. And if it doesn't work out, then next year we come back and we ask for fleet replacement funds. But for right now, this looks very promising.
So to elaborate just a little bit, we made the decision to, instead of taking out debt, have this revolving fund where we could replace cars for cash, and you're, by budgeting this way, you're saying that we can afford to, for a year, suspend any purchases for these kinds of vehicles? I assume this doesn't include fire engines or earth-moving equipment or things like that. These are just the occasional vehicles that people drive, and.
That's exactly right.
And then if we do. And then, if we do the Zipcar, we'll be doing it because it's less expensive than this amount of money, and it comes with other benefits, and so we're just suspending for a year.
Just, just a point of interest, interest, last year's vehicle replacements are just coming in now, for example. So, there's a lag, almost a year's lag, as, as it is, but I think David's correct.
All right. Alderman Budge?
Yeah, I'm concerned, because the, one of the nature of budgets, especially tight budgets, is that once something goes, gets taken out of the budget, bringing it back in at a later time, almost, it becomes impossible. And I'm concerned about taking this expense out of the budget. It's a expense that we know we have to incur on a regular basis, whether we do so by buying cars, or whether we get them through Zipcars, or any other means. And if we take the budget out of, if we take the money out of the budget now, it's gone for good. How are you going to pay for it next year? I don't see where that money is going to come from.
Well, just, just one moving part of the, of the Zipcar, using that as a generic term for leasing vehicles, there is a financing, could well be a financing component of that operation, which would drastically limit your annual appropriation for, for that purpose. Rather than funding a half a million dollars a year, you could be funding some far less, and getting superior service for it. I mean, that's, that's a moving part that we'd obviously have to define, but I think that's certainly out there, as a possibility.
I would, I agree, that could be, but turn this conversation around, and if I were in your seat, saying to everybody, "Well, it could be this, it could be that," what are we supposed to do? Trust me. I knew you were going to say that.
I think part of it is, as David alluded to, you know, this is a one-year takeoff from funding the vehicle maintenance. Not everybody needs new cars every year, you know, the fleet's not falling apart all the time, so this isn't going to be the end of the world. If it doesn't work out with the Zipcars and the other alternatives, we can get back to funding it the next year. Alderman Arnett?
So, as a prelude to the straw vote, and given that, Mr. Mayor, I stand with you in not supporting a tax increase, this would be one of the ones where I would be more inclined to, well, I will trust you, and by the way, I'd want to point out, we're talking about 1.5% of the entire city budget, so we're definitely, you know, at the upper crust here. As we said in our Finance Committee report, we largely accepted the budget as submitted by the mayor, and we had these questions, and I think they are more, as Joe said, philosophical, you know, we set up a PEGO program, and then we immediately back away from it. We're talking about using fund balance, and we don't think that's smart. So, I guess, when it comes to the vote, and given that some, this is better part of a penny of tax rate increase, this would be one where I would be more comfortable in dealing with the budget as submitted, for whatever that's worth.
Alderman Lippman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm concerned that some of the vehicles are, are on last legs. It looks like we have a number of vehicles that have inspections that were passed due from four or five years ago. Looking at some of the cars attributed to DNEP, for instance, we're looking at a 2,000 Chevy Cavalier, supposed to be inspected, 2012 was due, a 2005 Dodge Neon, supposed to be inspected, 2011, 2003 Honda Civic. So, we do have a lot of cars on last legs. I could go on. There's a full list of cars that are in that, that stat, status. So, I, I support the, the notion, certainly, of reducing the fleet, as everyone knows, and so I appreciate the intentions, I'm just not sure that we can, before we have something in place, cut that out. So, if, if we think that that's the amount of money that we'll need for fleet purchasing, I'm concerned for the reasons I've previously stated.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Thank you. A number of years ago, we did an analysis of our entire fleet, and came up with what I thought was a pretty sound program on replacement. Taking a year off is setting us a year back, if not longer. It seems to me that it would be better to have this amount in place and not need it, than to need it and not have it, and try to scrounge around later, to figure out how do we pay for the vehicles as they're falling apart. I agree with Alderman Lippman, our fleet is not in good shape, and I think if we would speak to our new fleet manager, whose responsibility it is to maintain our, our vehicles, he will attest to the same thing. So, I think it's very important that we keep it in mind that it's keeping our citizens safe, and it's keeping our employees safe. So, I think this should be included in the budget.
Alderman Piper?
And this is one of the most interesting things I heard from this discussion, which we didn't really get to in the Finance Committee, is the idea that these dollars lag a year behind. So, the reality is, in the current year, there will be dollars to spend, should we need to buy vehicles. The question is, you're just setting yourself up for a double whammy next year, if you can't find the money to put it back in, right? But, I mean, that, I mean, that's the score, right?
Yeah, as I tried to emphasize when I first started, this, this is not sustainable to not, not fund the fleet replacement fund. What we're asking for is to take a one-year pause, so we can explore this promising option of leasing cars. Most of the older vehicles that Alderman Lippman mentioned are those that are being replaced this year, the, the vehicles are just coming in. All of the Cavaliers are being replaced. I think almost all of the DNEP older vehicles are being replaced, so those are just coming in.
Replaced as in FY16 dollars, is that what you're saying?
FY15 and FY16 dollars, correct. So, you know, if, if the Zip program does not work out, next year, we absolutely need to identify additional funds to, to, to do fleet replacement. This, this isn't something that we can just keep doing year after year after year. It's, the money's going to have to be found, and we've got to pick it back up again. But this seems like a really promising initiative, and I think we would just like the chance to explore it.
So, Tom, if, if it, if that conversation about, about Zip, or about whoever, what other other operators are in that space are moving fast, is, is the expectation is, if you could have a deal that you would want to bring to us, that would happen in this next fiscal year, we would have to then find money to put back in if we stay with the budget, take it out?
Yeah, so I, I think that we've already started discussions with them, I think we hope to move pretty quickly on that, and that if it does go through, they would specifically target the oldest vehicles in the fleet, the ones that are, that we've identified as being beyond the, the useful service life, or, or economical service life. So, we would target those, and, and not need that, that large expenditure. It would just be built into the rates as we lease those vehicles.
So, it would change, potentially, the, you know, the amounts of the, of how these are funded going forward in, in other budgets? Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm sort of where Alderman Arnett is, and I, I think we have a lot more answers here than we had to the questions when we were thinking about this before, in the scheme of how to, how to figure out what amendments to embrace, and how to put a package together, and how to pay for it. I mean, this is one I would, I'd probably recommend that our colleagues to let go, but...
Well, I, I actually just changed my mind, because if we negotiate quickly...
Welcome to the fighting.
If we negotiate quickly, then we're going to have to have, I mean, Zip doesn't do this for free. So, maybe it isn't $465,000, maybe it's $265,000. Still seems to me, as Sheila said, and I think Alderman Lippman said, we should have something in the budget, because if we do quickly negotiate something with Zip, we're going to have to have something that gives it. They won't take Zip for...
I think part of that discussion, though, is, is it good to budget money when you don't know what's going to happen? So, for example...
We know something's going to happen.
Oh, we got a million dollars from the governor in flood mitigation. We don't budget that money, even though we were very confident in legislative session till after we got them. So, not to jump ahead to police overtime, but we're getting $200,000 more from the state of Maryland to help with police overtime. In addition, we're also lobbying for some extra money in overtime and police aid from the state. So, I wouldn't put that in my budget until I actually see the check. So, if you're saying we should put money in there for Zipcars, that may not work out. And if it doesn't, we just have the one year off.
Alderman Lippman?
Thank you. I have trouble with that logic, because there's plenty of instances where we do budget, you don't know that, you don't know how much money you're going to need for snow removal, but you budget for some reasonable amount of snow removal. And there's plenty of other examples like that, trash removal. You don't know how much trash is coming, but you know there's going to be trash. So, I don't know that I agree with that line of thinking. My additional question back to you, managers, is, one, if you don't have money for fleet replacement, and if you haven't yet reached the decision to eliminate those vehicles, which I prefer, then aren't you going to be incurring increased fleet repair dollars that you would have otherwise avoided, basically throwing good money after bad? And two, what if you, what are you going to do when you have a vehicle that surprisingly goes out of commission, that can't be repaired, and you haven't identified it as one that you could eliminate?
Well, we're dealing with two different things here, capital expenditure and maintenance as an operating budget expenditure. There's operating budget money in the operating budget for maintenance. If we go into a lease arrangement that includes the maintenance, there's money to pay for the lease arrangement.
So, is there an increase in the fleet maintenance budget?
If it's a capital item, if something goes down that we can't anticipate, or whatever the case may be, then we're looking at a capital, a capital expenditure, and mending the capital budget to include that item, and bringing it back to you and say, "Here's what we have. Here are the circumstances, here why we can't replace it. We do use some capital money, or we don't." I think that's pretty straightforward.
Have you increased the fleet maintenance budget?
Have we increased it?
Increased the fleet maintenance.
No, I wouldn't pretend to do that until we know more about what the leasing arrangement might, 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 might involve.
I, I think you're guaranteeing yourself an increase in fleet maintenance costs, if you're not going to replace the vehicles.
I don't, I don't know necessarily that you will. We'll have to see. I mean, we'll have to see what the arrangement would look like, and bring it back to you and say, "It looks like it's going to work," or "It looks like it's not going to work." And yes, we are going to have to put another half a million dollars in the, in the budget next year for capital, and we may have to reduce our maintenance, if the car's as old. Although, I think, in my experience, with seven square miles that we have in the city, we're not, we're not killing those vehicles. You're killing your vehicles.
Yes, I'm killing mine.
Really not. And I think, I think they, they can be expected to last longer than, than my previous experience has dictated, because the less miles that they're, they're traveling, I think they're in good shape for being as old as they are.
And just want to go back to something that was said earlier. We also have a revolving fund, so, and your concern relative to something catastrophic happening to one or more vehicles, we have funding for, in fiscal year 16, in a revolving fund, that could be used in fiscal year 17 also.
Is there nothing else? We can do the straw vote?
Alderman Budge? Sorry.
I guess the question is, are you in favor of the Finance Committee of adding $465,000 back into the budget?
Yes.
Alderman Pan?
No.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes.
Alderman Lippman?
A, a smaller number than that, but yes.
Alderman Kirby? Alderman Piper?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
Yes, but for a dollar less.
And Mayor Panalevi?
No. So, the next amendment, number two, is the increase in police overtime by $350,000. And before we get into the discussion, let me say that we've been working well, and we got a windfall of some money from the state of Maryland. So, next year, we'll have about $200,000 more, and I've talked to the police chief about it, that we can use for almost anything we want. And that's in addition to the requests we have through the Safe Streets program. So, with that said, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so, Mr. Finance Director?
Mr. Miller?
This windfall the mayor alludes to, when, when exactly does the check arrive, and how do, how does that complicate our budget from when it was drafted a month or two ago?
Once we obtain new grants, we will come to, to the State Council to appropriate those funds.
So, the assumption is, though, that there will be additional, basically additional dollars coming into the police budget since the budget was offered, and since even we considered it in the budget?
Correct. And the reality is, because the process starts very early, versus later on, let's say, in September or October, we, we, we have time to, to react if, for example, if we don't receive those funds. So, I, I, I feel very, you know, secure, safe, to, to, to assume those funds are going to be received. Once we receive the grant award notification, award, we'll come forward, put those dollars into the budget. If August, September rolls around, and we haven't received that grant award notification, then it gives us time to, to react in a different way.
So, we could pass this amendment, and the offset would be new, new police revenue from...
Or, or not pass the amendment, and rely on the, again, the, that the grant's going to come, and if not, then we have time to react, and, you know, later on, to put it back in. It's, the question is, if you do put it into this budget, what's the offset going to be?
Exactly. So, I think the answer to that, and you alluded to it earlier, this is relatively new, since we found out this information, that we're going to have it, and the money that's been allocated is almost guaranteed to come in. They basically took all the money that was given out, divided up proportionally amongst cities, and so we're going to get that money going forward. So, that's $200,000, so if you felt comfortable to take it to $150,000, we could. But just know, we also have $150,000 we're asking for. But I wouldn't make that recommendation, because we're not sure we're going to get it yet. Alderman Arnett?
Well, first of all, I want to commend the mayor and the administration. I think we, we need to grow up and beat the bushes for all the dollars we can get, and it seems we've done a good job on that, so thank you. However, this money, the $350,000 was not pulled out of the air. It's in the proxy, it was trying to approximate how much had traditionally been spent for overtime by police, even though it had not been budgeted. And that's sort of a status quo from before we've had this recent, I don't think we can call it any longer, uptick in crime. We have an increase in crime going on, and I think the expectation is, there'll be even more overtime needed, not less, or not status quo. So, I would, I would wait until we have the check cashed, and I would still budget, and I, I'm struck by something that has been said, I won't attribute to anyone in the administration, but basically, we always find the money from somebody else to pay for this money that the police are using. My view is, if they're using it, and it's appropriate, we ought to budget it. If it's not appropriate, we shouldn't budget it, and we shouldn't let the overtime budget be overspent. So, this is, all of these points that Finance Committee were making, to my mind, were maintaining budget discipline, and trying to adhere to principles that we've worked hard to establish, because we had a bad experience a few years ago, and we don't want to go back there. So, I'm comforted to hear that there might be some money forthcoming, but I also feel fairly certain that we're going to have more police overtime required, not less. And so, I would again urge that we stick with this $350,000. If, in fact, we get a, a lot of extra money, it can always go into fund balance to pay for sidewalk purchases.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Miller, can you tell us what the overtime has been in police so far this year?
I do not have a year-to-date, I can grab one quickly.
Okay, I think that's important, as we have this discussion, because I don't think this $350,000 nearly comes to the overtime, over, overage that they have thus far. I think it would be irresponsible of us to ignore that police are constantly over-budget on overtime. They know it, they need it, because they're understaffed, there's no getting around it. We're not asking them to do less, but we're going to give them less money to do it with. I don't think that's prudent. So, how do we fix that? This is a step in the right direction, thank you, Alderman Arnett, to try to give the police the tools they need, including paying for their overtime. You know, a couple of years ago... You know, a couple of years ago, we said, see if we can get the organizations that rely on us to support them to contribute more. And we haven't seen a significant increase. So I don't even know whether those discussions are being had, but we know our police are going to need overtime, and they're going to need a lot more than what's given here. So I don't know how we cannot move to support this increase. And I guess we have that number coming up right now.
Alderman Littman?
Thanks. It sounds like we need, well, I guess I'm interested, Finance Committee is going to revise the amendment to be the difference between the 350 and the 200.
I'm not entirely familiar. No, I think, I think 350, I mean, in my sense is, 350 was the number that meets the historic average of the last couple of years. I think there's, it could be a point made that we should be offering more flexibility to deal with issues that are happening in the community, but, and if that money comes in, that's great. If we have to pay for it by whatever other means, I'm open to that, so.
So it doesn't remain unchanged?
It doesn't matter to me either way.
Okay.
Just, just a couple of points. We are covering the cost of the police overtime. We cover it every year. We cover it. One, two, we, we are working diligently to try and deal with the two major eaters of overtime, prisoner transport, and how many police officers have to show up for trial through the state's, the state's attorney's office. Those are the two big users of overtime. And Chief Chris Stube is working diligently on prisoner transport in conjunction with the county, and, and with Mr. Adams relative to how many officers have to appear in court on any individual case. Between the additional grants we're getting, the coverage we are already making, and our efforts to reduce those two big items, we're going to do better on overtime next fiscal year, I'm convinced.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question is for either Mr. Miller or the city manager, Mr. Andrews. Have we ever budgeted enough for police overtime, at least in recent years, say the last 10 years to your knowledge?
As an appropriation in their budget? No.
Do we always end up paying, finding the money from some other source?
Yes, sir.
I, I mean, my memory is the same as yours.
The, but you have to take a look at the overall salaries and overtime. Right now, we, we budget salary, and we budget overtime. Over the last two years, overtime has been overspent as a line number. But when you combine salaries and overtime, it's only been the last two years that the entire category of salaries and benefits has been over.
That it's only?
Last two years that they've been over.
Okay. I mean, I remember back when we had budgeted, I think, 1.8 the last, one of the last years in Mayor Moyer's administration, and, and I don't think we ran over that, although we were close, we might have run over it, but, I mean, that's the last time I remember having this huge number for overtime, yet every year since, to my knowledge, I mean, frankly, we always find money for it. True?
Alderman Budge?
I've got a kind of a basic question, I guess it's for the city manager. I hear you when you say we always find a way to cover it, but this is a budget discussion, why aren't we budgeting for it?
I think because of the uncertainty factor. I mean, really is, even though we've had a history of, of one way, it's not always been that way, and it's the uncertainty. And the fact that we are trying to deal with holding down the overtime in those two areas I mentioned, which are big users of overtime. I would, I would rather deal with it that way than over-budget, I think, for overtime, because then it becomes tempting.
I think to that philosophical argument, if you give somebody a pot of money, overtime, whatever it is, they're going to spend up to that money. So if they need more, like we saw with the recent crime at Eastport, we allocated $125,000. So we can always find the money if we need it, but if you budget a much larger amount, we'll always spend that amount.
So why aren't we taking that approach to all of our other departments and all of our other budget categories?
I agree.
I mean, budget, the whole point of budgeting is you give them a number, and they're supposed to manage to it. And this particular category and this particular department has consistently been a fail for a number of years, and what the Finance Committee is doing is recommending that we adjust the number to reality so that the department can be successful. I think that's an important target.
Sure. I think part of it is, you know, if you look at what Mr. Andrews has done in his management style, we saved $800,000 from last year, keeping department heads, holding them to their budget, increased savings. I understand your concern about police, but I think it's like anything, and we take snow removal, if we need more money for snow, like we did this year, we find the money from somewhere to put in it. Alderman Arnett?
I think there's more than a budget issue for this one in particular, and that is, this is sending a signal to all of our constituents, because certainly, Eastport, I think, has actually gotten off lightly relative to some other wards with crime recently, but it is sending a signal to our constituents that they're saying they want more police presence, and this is one of the ways that we can give more police presence. And we need to put our money where our mouth is. And I think that it sends a positive signal. I appreciate the austerity on the part of department heads. I think they really do do an incredibly good job of managing their budgets, but other departments are supporting this amount of money. And it seems to me that it's fair to everyone. It's fair to the police because they need it, it's fair to the other departments because they should be able to live on their budget, and that we, we do this. It's, it's just recognizing a circumstance that has existed for a long time, and I think right now, over and above budget is the time when we want to give a signal that we're making it possible for our police to be out there in the community when they're needed and where they're needed.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, before we condemn the police department and their budget estimates, I've got to tell you, I, I have lived, prior to being elected to this council, with the, with the overtime issue when I was with the state's attorney's office. And the problem is, is that it's so unpredictable when you're going to need somebody for overtime and when you're not. I mean, here's a typical scenario in district court, over, whether it's a drunk driving case, or a second-degree assault, or something really minor, relatively speaking, like a trespass or disorderly conduct. Okay, Mr. Prosecutor, are your witnesses here? No, Your Honor, I have a police officer. By agreement, we're going to call him, you know, I have to call him at home, he's off today. Okay. Officer, can you come in? Yes, I can, I'll be right there. By the time he shows his face in court, and the defendant, or more often, the defense attorney, sees that I do have all my witnesses here, and all of a sudden, it's, Your Honor, my client's going to plead guilty, we don't need the police officer. So we paid four hours of overtime by union agreement, and this happens repeatedly every single day in district court. It's not the murders I'm talking about, or the armed robberies, but it's the uniform guys who, I, I mean, I can tell you, my years in the state's attorney's office, maybe things have changed, but I don't think so, state's attorney's office was well aware of budgetary problems, and the, as a matter of fact, we wouldn't call these people in unless we needed them. Otherwise, they would have been there to begin with, and I wouldn't have had to make the phone call to the poor guy at home on his day off. We, we do it the same with guys that are working during the day. It's 2:30, I've got a case, he's working, call-up radio, typically, the guy's there in 10 minutes, and frequently, we get the same response, ah, you go back on the road, he's here, I know he's here and available, so we're going to plead guilty. There's not much that can be done. So before we condemn the estimates or inaccuracy of estimates, you know, there's always so much that Chief, Chief Chris Stube can do. In the state's attorney's office, at least my experience has been, by and large, it couldn't be more cooperative in terms of trying to reduce the overtime. I, I don't know, I don't know if there is an answer. If there is, I don't know what it is.
I think you bring up a very good point, actually several of them. One, you're correct, the majority of overtime issues is used in court, and it's used for prisoner transport. And two people we're working with, one's the county executive on prisoner transport. So in the old days, you could arrest somebody, lock him up somewhere, go back to be on the street, now you have to wait with them until they have an attorney present. Choos up our overtime, stops people from getting out. And two, we've worked with Wes Adams, our state's attorney, on better ways of only calling witnesses when you need them. But the third point you brought up is overtime, which is if you call somebody on their day off at nine o'clock, they get paid four hours by union rules overtime, they come back again at 11, they get paid for another four hours of overtime. So that's something we might want to look at in the future. Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yeah, I'll attest to what Alderman Pan is saying in Baltimore City. I had a district court case, and I had an officer drag them from West Virginia, because that's where he lived. And when they showed up, they pled. And that happens routinely. So I attest to exactly what he said, and mine was an, one of mine was an, that was the most extreme case I had. So that does happen.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you. So two thoughts. One, I know that it does happen routinely, but because we know that it happens routinely, doesn't that make it a predictable expense that we should be budgeting for? And, and two, to Alderman Budge's point, and I agree with this proposed transfer in your, in your reasoning here, but just be aware that the same thing applies elsewhere to the budget, particularly with regards to the Department of Transportation. Their five-year average is to be over-budget by a million dollars. So the, the same arguments that support transfer, or adding $350,000 for police overtime, support adding a million dollars for transportation to cover their over-budget each year. So just realize that we have that other, in corresponding issue. You could solve that issue as you can solve this issue in different ways as well, there's other options. But if, unless you're going to change what you're doing, you're going to get the same result each year, more or less, within a factor of annual oddities.
I think to that point, and it's interesting you brought up transportation, we have done things differently. We kind of had a three-pronged approach to how we're going to fix transportation. The first one was, we asked the county for more money, and initially, they agreed to give us 250,000, then we got 500, and this year, I believe, we're getting 750,000. So we've got more money from the county. Number two, we did a new advertising contract. So if you look at the bus shelters, you look at the buses, we're bringing in more revenue. Director Mal, I don't know if we know what number that is yet, but we're planning to get more in. And three, you know, we made adjustments to the routes a number of years ago when we came in. So those are proactive steps. With overtime, I agree. I think the cost is going to go up every year, but what we're working with the county executive on, on prisoner transport, could be a huge cost savings to us. Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes, two things. First of all, when we're talking about police, we need to talk about the whole picture, because overtime, as it relates to court cases and the like, is one piece of the scenario. But the other is their staffing issue. They are understaffed, and our detectives and many of our officers are working 12-hour shifts. And if there is an incident, they maybe work in 18 or 20-hour shifts, and there is no backup. So, you know, it's all about how to deploy their employees so that we are properly covered, and that we're not really working our, our policemen into the ground. We want them to be alert and conscious and capable to do their jobs to the best of their ability. The police chief is being beaten up constantly, not physically, about his overage. So we can fix this. So I think we have a responsibility to do that. With transportation, we as a council, and I don't think any of the previous councils have ever made a decision about how we will treat transportation. It is a service. There's a transportation system in the country that pays for itself. They're not designed to, you can't charge people enough money. You know, we decided when we used to go to the airport, and it cost, we were charging riders, I think it was four dollars to go to the airport, and it cost us as a city to run that route, $24 a person. There's no way we could charge the residents that. So we cut that service because we couldn't afford to run it. You know, we cut services back going to the community college. And, Mr. Mayor, ridership is down. And it's down because we're not providing the level of services that, that's needed. Now, some will say, well, that means they didn't need the rides anyway. Others will say, I had to quit that job that was paying me more to get a job that I could ride to the, to that job on a city bug. So, you know, there are a lot of factors that we need to take into consideration. But with, going back to police, it's not just when they're in court, or when they're following a parade, but it's their whole work responsibility. And I don't think there was a question in there, but I do have one other comment. Because the police chief said his budget is 710,000, and he's spent 1.1 million dollars thus far. I'm, pardon me?
Do you have a number of that, that comes out to, if you might tell me more, where you guys, sometimes, probably, that could be?
So he's ahead of you, because he's already spent 200,000 more than you have on your record, sorry. I told you about it, yeah, right.
Mr. Andrews?
Which is actually less than what we thought he was going to spend. One final point, if I may, to Alderman Arnett's point, the, the way we covered police overtime last year was not out of the hide of department heads, it came from increased revenue. And I dare say that will probably be the case again this year.
No other discussion? So the vote would be to add 350,000 back into the budget.
Alderman Budge?
Yes.
Alderman Pan?
Yes. Reluctantly, yes.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes.
Alderman Littman?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby?
Yes.
Alderman Fifer?
Yes.
Alderman Arnett?
Yes.
And Mayor Panalini?
Yes. The third amendment is to increase the community grants by 400,000.
No, two 400,000.
Two 400,000.
So just as a refresher for everyone, the current, the mayor's budget's allocation, 195,000 plus 10,000 for the arts and public places, that came to us, the historic average in the last 10 years is somewhere up around 800,000 for these funds. We heard the other night from a lot of the folks in the community about all the good work, especially the frontline social services stuff that is done by these folks, and the Finance Committee felt, I'm not sure if 400 is the exact number, but that we should be heading in the other direction, we should be making a larger contribution to that. And I know the committee that the city is impanel, the folks from a variety of departments who work on this, have come back to us with recommendations, if the council was to pass this, to show sort of how those extra dollars could be spread out among those applicants. And I think there's a range of numbers we could arrive at, but for the purposes of starting the conversation, 400 was where the Finance Committee was.
Discussion? Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, to be sure, a discretionary item. The other items had to do more with philosophy and various ways you can account for things. My personal rationale behind this was, after the meeting we had at the Housing Authority Community Center, many constituents at that meeting came up and said, look, you can throw police at this, and in the short run, that may be doing something, but you really need to go to the underlying circumstances. You need to be doing things to help people and help them get the services they need, but also things like job training and finding jobs and skills like that, so they can move out of the public housing circumstance. Now, we need to do this for everyone, it isn't just for public housing, but this is the mechanism the city has always used to provide services that we cannot or do not provide. The county has social services, we, we don't. And this is our way of doing it. It's actually a very effective, very economical way to do it, because by providing the local match, we provide relatively small amount of money that leverages much larger amounts of monies coming from other sources. But they want to see that the local government is supporting these particular kinds of actions. In the discussion in the Finance Committee, we looked at the three groups that are above the line, they've been cut in half from historic levels, actually probably more than that. And we felt, gee, maybe instead of 25, they should each get 50. Well, once, once you're starting to do that, and you start to look at the amount of funding for other groups and the work that they do for us, and I admit, this going up to 400,000 is is out of the air. I'm glad the committee is working on this and they can come up with a much more refined suggestion. But again, this is all part of a broader response to the community in terms of better relationships across the community, helping where help is needed, and not just throwing cameras and police officers at it. We heard Mr. Rao speak to this when he spoke before the Public Safety Committee. And he spoke quite eloquently, and I thought, right to the point. This is money that we're going to have to find someplace, but I think that it's money that is well-spent. And right now is, again, the right time to send a message to everybody in the community that we're going to try to do things that make long-term, more permanent changes, not just put cameras on you or have extra police officers on your corner. So that is the underlying notion in asking for this amount of money.
Anyone else? Alderman Lippman?
When do you expect the community to put back on their own condition?
They have, they've already...
Yeah, I think they've started to put together a draft that will be...
Nikki has.
Yeah. But, yeah, that's my assumption. But yeah, I mean, I think obviously it'll be, the question is more, I think, in this context, is what, are people more comfortable at 300,000 or 400,000? Does that make difference to people? You know, because then we can figure out with the committee who's looked at them and met with everyone, what the best allocation is within that number. Or are people uncomfortable with any raise in this? And I guess that's sort of what I'm interested in.
And I guess I'm partly looking at it the other way around. It's, once there's a face or an organization to the suggestion and we know, we have a sense of what those organizations do, it would be easier to rationalize whether or how much to give.
Alder Kirby?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thanks. I'm entirely in agreement with Alderman Arnett, and I haven't seen these new allocations. But I just do know that easily, I think the statistic is something like, these nonprofits are probably the third highest employer in the state. That's pretty correct, that's fair. Yeah, nonprofits are the third highest employer in the state. It's the workforce. It helps keep people in jobs. But it's a valuable, very valuable asset to the city of Annapolis. I mean, there isn't going to be enough money, even with the addition of 400,000. There's still not going to be enough. When I leave this meet, I mean, after I get out of here today, I meant to send an email to the rest of my colleagues today, where somebody's asking to come into Clay Street area and do a program. And he asked for $10,000. And it's well thought out. I haven't had a chance to go all the way through it, but I did have a prior conversation just this morning with him, but I need to forward it to my colleagues. But I just don't, if we're going to err, then that's error on the side of, not on the side of public safety and doing nothing. If ever there, this 400,000 is not going to be enough to give us just the sum that we need to have. Some of these organizations are vital. And I just think they need to be funded and that funding needs to be level funded. And it shouldn't be tops and turds. We need to sustain the organizations that we have, that we know are viable and doing the correct things for the city of Annapolis. And we know who they are. Thanks.
Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't think it's the government's job to sustain nonprofits in general. I disagree with my colleague from Ward Six. I think what we're doing is blindly throwing money at a problem without any connection, without any, not only no guarantee of success, there's never any guarantee of success. I realize that when it comes to things like street violence and criminal activity in general. I think that, I mean, what some of these groups have to do with training young people or reducing violent crime, I don't know. I'm not going to name names because I think, again, each and every one of the grant applicants that I've seen are very worthy charities. And if I had the money, I'd give some money to every single one of them on a personal level. I don't think it's the government's job to do that. It's individuals' job to do that. We are, the suggestion is that we just blindly throw money at this. I mean, look at some of these groups. They have nothing to do with the problem of crime or anything even close to that. If we are going to, if we are going to distribute the $195,000 as budget, I would suggest that we pick four or five or six of these groups, make a meaningful contribution, and take it from there. I think it's simply not a core government function to, as my friend from Alderman Six said, you know, to keep these organizations running. They need to run on their own. That's why they're nonprofits. That's why, you know, we have what we have in the tax code for these groups. And I don't know why every year we have to come back, particularly in a year like this year, we're talking about raising the tax rate. And one of the substantial reasons for that is so we can give money away to charities that our citizens have very little if any say over? I don't think so. Doesn't make any sense to me. Thank you.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes. I want to pick up on a point that Alderman Arnett raised, and that's the leveraging part of this opportunity that we have to give to these community grants. I think that's extremely important. Oftentimes, these organizations would not have what they have, but for the money that we do provide to them. I can see Alderman Payon's point. This might be something we might want to consider for the future, not this year because it's too late, that those organizations that Alderman Payon is referring to that really have nothing to do with, quote, he says, crime, we might want to add a component to the nonprofits to indicate that a part of 25% or 20% of whatever they do be toward some sort of community slash social service type work add a component, whether it's providing a job to some person that lives in a hacker community or providing some sort of opportunities for the people that live in certain communities. That might be something we want to consider next year in some future time. I think that might allay Alderman Payon's concerns. Thank you.
Pardon, Mr. Pfeifer?
Just a quick point of clarification. We have this committee that is made up of folks from three or four different departments who meet with all the applicants, and they have a criteria that they, in making the recommendations to us, sort of weigh a variety of questions. So I think there is more of that going on. That's only two or three years old now. You know, in the sort of bad old days, we often were, the nine of us sitting up here trying to scratch out numbers on a list, which I, so I think this is, there is, you know, it's always, could have more refinement, but the idea of having them ask the same questions to the same people and then make recommendations is where we're at. But I'm not sure it's going to satisfy Alderman Payon, but I appreciate the sentiment.
Alderman Budge?
I look at this from a slightly different viewpoint. I am concerned that we don't have any methodology for agreeing upon what our policy ought to be here. We should have a policy that says that the function of the city government is to spend X percent of our revenues or X percent of our expenses on human welfare functions, just like we spend Y percent on police and Z percent on fire. We should be spending a certain amount on human welfare and we should agree as a policymaking body on what that percent is. And then it can filter down to the committee to decide, based on their criteria, how that gets divvied out. Instead, we're doing this backwards. We're picking numbers, whether it's the mayor's number or the Finance Committee's number, out of thin air and throwing it at we don't know what. And I've got a problem with that. I think we need to revisit our methodology and take it back to basics. I think it is hypocritical of the council to suggest that the number that we voted on for community grants last year, and we all approved last year, isn't a good number anymore. We have no way of knowing that. So I think that I'm not in generally in favor of increasing the grant allocation anywhere above the number we voted on last year.
Just again, as another point of clarification about what the Finance Committee did, that the mayor's budget has a $50,000 cut in that $205,000 account. It was 250 last year. So the budget that arrived to us was not a flatline budget from the previous years and was actually down. And I think, you know, a number of us who've been on the council for a number of years have voted for a shrinking pot. We have seen that head in that direction for a variety of budgetary reasons. So the question was, at what point do you draw the line and say, you've shrunk it enough where it's almost, it's reaching the point where it's not worth doing? And there's obviously some folks who would say, we should just tear it up and not do it. The question is, the reaction to that, as I said at the top of this, was, we came up with a number and said, let's go back up. If that doesn't have support, if there's some people who are against it in general, whether it's $1 or 400,000, or if it goes back to 250,000, that makes a difference to them. So I guess, I mean, that's a helpful discussion to see where everyone stands, but...
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes. I think we should be clear that the amount that's in this budget recommendation from the mayor is the lowest amount, at least in the nine years I've been on this council. There were years, the early years, when we were at about 800,000. And I thought it was Alderman Arnett's effort to take us at least halfway back to where we were back then. These groups, and as you were mentioning Will Rao's name, I was writing his name on a piece of paper to remind myself, because he has spoken in every setting now, including my community meeting on Tuesday night, about the quality of life issues that we should be concerned about. You know, none of us in this room need any of these programs because we are truly blessed to be able to support ourselves and our families at the level that we want to be living. But everybody in our city is not as fortunate as we are. You know, these programs feed children on the weekends because there are, believe it or not, an awful lot of kids in the city of Annapolis who don't have food over the weekends. And if they don't get those backpacks full of seven meals, they go without food until lunch the next Monday or breakfast the next Monday. You know, there are counseling programs within these organizations that help young people overcome whatever addictions they may have or on their way to having. You know, there's so many programs that will stop us on the front end from having to lock them up on the back end. And we cannot ignore that. You know, they are our responsibility. If we want to be responsible for our city, we have to be responsible for everybody in our city. And that's a big job. And we can't do it all, that's true. But we can do our little bit. And I would like for us to see something that says, you know, a certain amount automatically will be dedicated to these groups. Because they provide a service that we cannot. Wecare picks up people off the street and takes them to drug rehab, and they've got a 95% success rate. I don't think there's anybody else in the state that can say they have that great of a success rate. So there are programs that we cannot afford to do, but we can give them a little bit to help them. And as several people have said, they need the matching funds. I know the Community Action Agency used to get 50,000 from the city. And that was because the state, in order for the state to give them the grant, they needed a $50,000 contribution from the city. And when we cut it back to 25, they had to go back to the state and say, please, 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 give us the grant anyway. And they were successful because the state recognized the value of their program. So it may sound like a lot to double it, but it's not taking us close to where we were. And it's just still not meeting the needs that we as a city should be providing. So I would hope that we would support this amendment.
Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several quick points. One, I remember at your inauguration, you made some very passionate and even emotional comments about groups that you needed, you felt we needed to reach out and help. And I was actually proud for you, the amount of emotion you showed. So I know you didn't take these, the cuts lightly. I would respond to Alderman Budge in that I'm guilty of not having a specific earmark for each group. I was hoping, and I think we will get help from the committee, and I spoke with Nikki, who is the chair of that group, and said specifically that my intention was that we do more to help people that could have a outcome, which is that we're seeing them at work rather than in other, less desirable places. And I'm very confident the group will do it. I don't know what the right level is that the council at large would be comfortable with. Alderman Budge, we had, in fact, Alderwoman Finlayson and I worked on it several years ago, a committee that put together the legislation that exists now. I agree with you, it's time to go back and look at that. I think that we have been somewhat cavalier in the way we've dealt with this. We've basically put it off to others to do our heavy lifting, and maybe we should reconsider that. And we do have outcome measures in the processes they have to go through. They report quarterly, and they tell us about their successes. So it's not like we just send out the money and see you later kind of thing. There is a process. But I think it could take another review. Finally, the 800,000, I went back to Teresa Wellman, was in the days when we were combining both capital and community services in one big pot. So I don't know that we were ever up to 800,000 for community service grants, but we certainly were at larger amounts of money. And again, I don't, I can't sit here and tell you I have the wisdom of what is the right amount of money. And maybe it changes every year, and maybe we need to have a discretionary amount in this community grant. We've already had two people who've come up after the fact that have said they would like some help. And it would be nice to have the discretion to say, maybe some part of this is a discretionary amount that, again, the council would vote on, and we have some money left to give other people. But I would just say, whatever the right number is, and I will rely on my colleagues to help us decide, I do think we need to do more. I don't think we should cut. I do think we should increase, but after that, I think we have to debate that amongst ourselves.
I think every single grant applicant that's on here, and Nikki just sent a list, all the aldermen to refresh on the process we go through and how much they give, is worthy of money. They all do a good job, they all help out, and we're in the difficult decision of what are we going to do and what are our priorities? When you look at the city, the role of government, the philosophy, helping people, there's only so much we can do. And we've basically gone through this first three amendments that we've talked about. Are we going to accept them or reject them? We haven't got to the larger question is, do we support the mechanism for doing that? A cut or a tax increase, which I think for protocol, we'll get through all the amendments first and then vote on that. But we're going to have to make decisions. And each of the decisions we make, and this one's certainly not easy to make, have consequences. Alderwoman Finlayson mentioned, you know, the money the state gives in matching. They have a billion dollar that they contribute to the Running Day Fund and a $400 million surplus. And the main reason is, they didn't make the financial decisions that the city had made in years past that got them in a bad situation. Certainly would love to stand up here and say, we're going to give money to all these groups, but at the end of the day, it's got to come from somewhere. And I think when you look at what the public wants, we're talking about sidewalks, that money comes from somewhere. And not the Italian Eisenhower Golf Course, but if you think about the philosophy behind that, you know, there's millions of dollars in upkeep that have to go into it. So on one hand, we're going to dig into our capital budget and say, you know, we're building the largest water treatment plant in the city's history. We just redid the bulkhead. We've got to do Main Street. We've got to do the Hillman Garage. Oh, but by the way, instead of money for sidewalks, we're now going to dig in to fix up a clubhouse and a golf course that's not even in the city limits. So as we start digging into making these improvements, it's got to come from somewhere. You squeeze the balloon on one end, it comes out of the other. So certainly, as we go through these, there's kind of been an easiness to say yes to them, but we're going to have to get to the hard part right after this. I just want to remind my colleagues of that. Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on what Alderman Finlayson indicated. Yeah, there are children. I work in an elementary school, I have for four years. And I think some of us here would be appalled at what actually goes on and what's needed especially for children, the backpack program. And this morning, I was at a large contingent of folk over the county that represent different agencies and nonprofits. And we were talking about how mental health services for those five and under, which was a big, big eye-opener. Also, there's only one, the information I received, one psychiatrist that's Latino that represents, that services Latino families in the county. Only one. So there are a lot of needs out here, and because I work in a school, I'm privy to a lot of information. But what we're doing here is just scratching the surface, barely scratching the surface. And I think it behooves us to take a look at some of the broader and the wider issues and what's really going on out here. I mean, for some people, it's not easy, and they're struggling. And at Alderwoman Finlayson's meeting the other night, I mentioned the job fair, and people were all over it, because people are actually looking to better themselves, but really have no means or mechanisms, or know the means and mechanisms to do it. So we are providing something that people need. Rest assured, these things are important. And I'm hearing it day after day after day. So thank you.
I'll take a vote after that.
Thank you, I'll be brief. First of all, Alderman Arnett, the legislation we're referring to is O-715, and it was sponsored by the members of the Rules Committee and I. I largely agree with the sentiments expressed by Alderwoman Finlayson. Alderwoman Finlayson, I often don't say that, so I want to make sure you heard me say it. I agreed with most of your sentiments, I want to make sure you heard that. I've evolved on this issue from starting in a position of where Alderman Peone is to this point, for largely the reasons that you expressed. Where I stand on this vote will be, yes, I support the notion of the $400,000, but it's got to be connected to a source of funds, not just adding to more costs without a source.
All right. Take a...
Sure. Yeah. Mr. Mayor, thanks. Look, Monday night, service providers came to that deus, just in a steady stream, at the public hearing Monday night. I didn't see one service provider at that podium that I felt wasn't worthy. And they took time out of their own day, their own evening, to come down here and tell this council how desperately they want to continue to serve the city. And I think if we error, if there's a dearth of that type of activity in the city of Annapolis, we're going to have more problems than we got right now. I just think that they're a very vital part of this wheel that makes this city turn. Thanks.
All right. Attorney Clerk?
Alderman Budge?
No. Would you be voting?
You are voting if you want to increase community grants up to $400,000, per the Finance Committee's recommendation.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Peone?
None.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes.
Alderman Littman?
Once there's an offsetting amount.
Alderman Kirby?
Yes.
Alderman Piper?
Yes.
Alderman Arnett?
Yes.
And Mayor Finlayson?
No. All right. If you're following along, the next set of amendments we have are from Alderwoman Finlayson and Alderman Kirby. And I'll let the sponsor speak to those two amendments.
I think the first amendment is the amendment that speaks to an increase in the budget of 1% for, well, an increase of a 1% across-the-board pay raise for all city employees. My rationale for doing or making this amendment, I sat through 13 weeks of interest-based bargaining, during which time we were extremely successful in providing not only pay raises for our employees over a three-year period, but reducing our post-employment obligations and keeping our pension at the level that would make it sustainable. As I said, it took 13 months, but we were very successful. And in doing so, we assisted with the city in making sure that our bond rating was secure, because they recognize, the agencies, that our inability to pay for and plan for our post-employee obligations weren't there, weren't in place. And so we were able to do that through bargaining. Our employees didn't just say they were going to help us out and agree. They agreed as we increased their contribution to their pension, as we were increasing, we were at the lowest contribution rate of anybody in the state, I believe, at the time. We've increased our contributions, and the employees increased theirs, so that they were giving as well as the city. They agreed to increase their contributions to their health care. They came up with novel ideas. We, as a team, came up with novel ideas about how to deal with their health care. And we thought we had come up with a novel way to deal with future employee salary increases. The bargaining broke down, but the need did not. Our employees went for four years without a pay raise. After the interest-based bargaining, the success of interest-based bargaining, the employees got a 10% pay raise, but 6% of that went back into their assisting the city through higher contributions in their health care and their retirement. So actually, over an eight-year period, our employees walked away with a 4% pay raise. This year in bargaining, we had hoped that that was the opener. And we had hoped that we would put a tool in place so that we wouldn't have to have this discussion every year, but it would be tied to the cost-of-living index. Future increases would be tied to the cost-of-living index. We were not successful in even having that discussion. We put it off until the Comp and Class study is completed, which will be, I guess, sometime after the new fiscal year. So my proposal, and the employees, then, we turned into a traditional bargaining. And our employees made a request of a 2% pay raise. And we made no counteroffer. So I came up with the proposal that we would offer our city employees a 1%. Now, you have heard from community sources and others that they want more police. You have heard that we are understaffed with fire. You have heard from almost every corner of our city that our employees are working harder with less. We know that there have been positions that have been cut and not filled, but not jobs and not work. So the positions were cut, but the jobs remained. And so our employees have filled in, and many, many, many of our employees are doing a job and a half, if not more, to fill the void that was left by layoffs and not filling vacant positions. We have a responsibility to provide, what I used to say, we're the best and brightest. We may not be able to qualify our employees as the best and brightest, I think so. But we are very much responsible for maintaining our good employees. You know, the county, I believe, is offering a 3% or 4% pay rate. We already see an exodus from the police department going to the county. Do we want to keep that up when we're needing more officers in the city? We have to make a good faith effort to tell our employees that we appreciate them, we understand that, you know, the cost for everything and everybody is going up, and that we don't have a lot to give, but we can make some effort to take care of our employees. We want them to stay here, and we have vacancies, we want to be able to bring people in. But they're going to be comparing us to surrounding jurisdictions. Can we compete? And I contend more and more, we are not competing. And if we are, we're not going to get the best and the brightest. So my proposal is that we offer our employees a 1% cost-of-living adjustment. I was told earlier that everybody's getting a pay raise anyway, and that's not true. We have a process where there are steps. Employees got to increase as long as they are at a certain step. I don't know what the exact steps are, because each contract is different, but from, and I can give you my personal experience, when I was a teacher, we got a pay increase for the first seven years, every year. Mr. Leahy, you can attest to this. And by the end of year seven, I had to have a master's degree. And then I was frozen. I didn't get another pay raise until I got to year 10. And then I was frozen. I didn't get another pay raise until I got to 12. And then again, until I got to 15, and then 20, and then 30, 25, and then 30. So there were big blocks of time where I was frozen without a pay raise unless there was a cost-of-living adjustment. Our employees are on that same track. The years may be different, but they are, they get a pay raise almost every year to a certain point, and then they're frozen. Not half of our employees are on steps. Many of them, and I'm trying to get that exact number and waiting for it to come, or maybe Mr. Miller has it for us, there are a lot of our employees who are frozen. We keep hearing that the future is looking bleak. We have an opportunity. Next year's election year, and we can all be real in this room, nobody's going to propose a tax increase next year. Nobody's going to propose unless they think it's the benefit of them getting reelected. We'll make an effort to take care of our employees. I contend that we all have a responsibility and a conscience, and that we should do whatever we can to make sure that our employees are taken care of. So this is my amendment, that we give a 1% across-the-board increase to all of our employees at the cost of $521,500. Right, Mr. Andrews?
Any discussion? Alderwoman Arnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I strongly support cost-of-living increases. In fact, I would support a 1.6 or 1.8, whatever the ECI indicates. But we can't afford to do it with the size of the step increases. Even though not everyone gets a step increase, the step increases increase our wage bill by about 3% every year. That's just not sustainable when our revenue is increasing at 1%. So I think that there does need to be a major rethink about the cost of living. I was in favor of a cost-of-living adjustment when we ended the first round of interest-based bargaining, and I was in favor of it when we ended the last, but not without some kind of compensating balance. It's not just a 1% increase this year, it's a 1% compounded by growth every year. So that 1% doesn't stay at 1%. It grows and grows and grows. And we don't have the latitude. I'm racking my brains, trying to figure out if, in fact, all of the Finance Committee recommendations were agreed to, where we're going to find the money, as you said, Mr. Mayor, where we're going to find the money for that. My proposal to the committee was that we look at the programmatic budget and start with the number four priorities, and then go to the number three priorities and find cuts. But I don't know how we can do all of the things the Finance Committee, do a 1% COLA or 1.6, 1.8, whatever, hire more police officers, which I would find a lot more sympathy for amongst my constituents, hire more firefighters, do all of these things. I just don't know where the money is coming from for that. I fear the notion is, and in fact, I see it, we raise taxes 3 cents per 100. Well, where's the relief for the taxpayers? Where's their COLA? Where's their compensation? And I hear more and more from Realtors, the very first question any prospective buyer asks when they come to look for homes in Eastport is, what are the property taxes? Maybe there's some other place in the city we should be looking. And we are very close to being on that terrible place where people will not be coming to the city, and property values will go down. And then we have to raise taxes even more, just to stay abreast. So I am very sympathetic to a COLA. I think it's the right thing. When I was employed, I got COLAs as a federal employee. I know how good that felt. I felt that I was being recognized for doing a good job. But we can't print money like the federal government prints money. And so we have to have some restraint in some places. And I will admit that I have not come up with specifics, as you'll see from Alderman Littman, about where we can find some money within spending, but I know that's what we have to do.
Mr. Mayor, may I respond or correct some information? On my sheet, this 400, or this, what is it, 3% tax increase? I came up with that number, that's inaccurate. 1%, 500,000 is what percentage? But if you recall, when you presented your amendments to the Finance Committee, I added this to what you had proposed, which came to a sum total of the 3%. So that was tied in. So no, this 1% is not a 3%.
Let me correct there. I did not propose a tax increase. I said what these amendments would cost should we raise taxes. But I did not propose a rate, tax rate increase.
Okay, so based on what you said, this increase was added to that, and so this would have been a total if this amendment was added to yours. Thank you.
I think one of the things we have to explain for the public at home that hear about COLAs and steps, and they may not understand what exactly that means, and you alluded to it. I think if you went to the average taxpayer, or average citizen for that matter, and said, the first seven years you go to work for somebody, the city, private sector, whatever, you're automatically going to get a 5% pay increase regardless of your performance. I think any person out there in the private sector would be shocked if that's what they got. When you include health benefits, include pension, the compensation you get for working for the city is far beyond that of the private sector, where I've worked and known. But also to that, if you said, you know what, we'll get rid of the steps and just give people COLAs, I could support that, and I think most people would, because financially it would make money. The only two real problems I have with what you suggested is, one, you alluded, we haven't finished the IVV process yet, because we're waiting on the Comp and Class study. So I would ask, don't you think it's premature to give something to the employees without understanding what they would give back? And number two is, how are we going to pay for this in years' future, as Alderman Arnett alluded to, it's just going to keep compounding and compounding every year? So will the taxes go up every year?
Well, first of all, let me correct your first premise. I suspect most people watching do understand steps. And it is not without an evaluation of some sort. So it's not just a gift that each person is given each year. And we do have an evaluation system in the city, where department heads evaluate the work of their employees. So it is somewhat merit-based.
I would just be interested to see, how would you finish?
And that 5%, it varies, depending upon the contract that's negotiated. For teachers, there was a 4% difference between steps. So it varies. So we shouldn't mislead the public to think otherwise. Now, everything we do is compounded, so I'm not sure why we pretend that this is unique. You know, when we give any pay raise, it's going to be compounded over time, just like the employees are with us over time. But there's one other piece that I forgot to mention, and that's the fact that their health care costs are going up. And from my understanding, the health care cost is going up 4%. But we are charging them, and what's in the budget is a 9% increase. And I've been told by Mr. Miller and Mr. Andrews, that the additional 5% will go into savings, so that if we need it, we'll have it, since we're self-insured. So not only are we going to not, according to you, not consider giving the employees a 1% pay raise, but we're going to charge them more than we need to for their health care, and then we're going to put it in an account that we will handle. So that's town amount, too. The employees will take home less money next year than they did this year. So we should be clear about that, and they should be clear about that.
I think we'll have Mr. Miller clarify that a little bit, because that was not my understanding of how the process worked. Mr. Miller?
Yes, thank you. The health insurance issue, as you know, the city's self-insured. One of the recommendations, and quite frankly, I think, well, I'll put it this way, a best practice, is to maintain a health insurance reserve, which is part of the city's overall risk management pool. To date, we have never had a health insurance pool, so that if the expenditure... To date, we have never had a health insurance pool, or so that if the expenditures exceeded contributions, the amounts, those additional amounts would be paid by the general fund, by the taxpayers. And we did not go back to the employee increase retroactively, the offset, if you will, to recapture those overages. Moving forward, talking with our financial advisors, talking to the city auditors, external auditors, looking at best practices, quite honestly, my experience up in New England where we had similar health insurance cooperatives, if you will, best practice is that you have a self-insurance pool, you have, much like, you know, the general fund reserves, so that you do have a overage from, compared to budget, you have a source of funds to pay those overages. If you start exceeding the amounts, there are typically two ways that you can alleviate that. One is to provide a holiday to the employee and to the employer, because the employer is a participant in this trust fund. So the employer and the employee would have a holiday. And that holiday could be a pay period, it could be two pay periods, depending upon how much lower the rates needed to be, or the fund needed to be. The other way to do that would be if rates are projected to increase by some amount next year, you keep it lower. So for example, rather than 9% increase, you have a 7% increase, so that you would bleed off some of those excess reserves. The important thing here to remember, though, too, is these are estimates. As quickly as one estimate went from 9% to 4%, that could go right back up to 9%. The original 9% calculation was made for a period of six months, July through December, is my understanding. The 4% was based on calculations through two more months of city activity, and then taking on additional savings relative to some contract renegotiations, improving the expected outflows of the funds. However, the, if you look at the average increases in health expenses for, on the national, and for state, they exceed or equal to around 10%. So a 9% is less than those averages. And if you look at some of the information coming through, for example, there are some health, because of the new federal regulations, those rates are going up even more. They're exceeding 20%. So the healthcare, as you all know, is a very, very volatile component. It's a volatile component within the national economics. And based on all those different competing aspects, I do think 9% is the appropriate number. And again, if we need to revise that, there are ways to do that, keeping the city and the city taxpayers whole.
Alderman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Miller. I have a little bit of experience negotiating contracts and dealing with healthcare increases. About 15 years of doing it for the school system with about 8,000 employees. And in my experience, we never had to change the rate, and maybe times have changed. I've been out of the position with the Teachers Association for a long time. But I heard earlier on, when we were having discussions about other amendments, that we'll, if it doesn't work, we'll just figure it out later. But for some reason, we're not hearing the same thing here. How often have we actually overspent on our healthcare? We're self-insured, just like the school system was. So how many times have we actually had to tip into, or tap into the general fund to pay for overages in our health insurance, before our health insurance?
Just two years ago, three years ago, we had to do it.
We had one employee who had a severe illness-
Well, again, I don't know about specific employees, but if the question is, how often do we, or have we had to dip in, we've had to dip into the general fund to pay those excess expenditures? And again, I would go back to, what is best practice? What can we do to protect both the city and the employee and do the prudent thing? And I think what we're doing here is the prudent practice.
Well, I do know the specific case that we're talking about a couple of years ago, and it was a tragic case. But that is not a common, and surely we, illnesses befall all kinds of people, but to treat all of this as if that, we're going to have that tragedy all the time while we're saying, don't worry about the cars, we can, we'll come up with the money to fix those later, and don't worry about this, we'll come up with the money to fix that later. We're dealing with the employees and their salaries now, and their paychecks. Why is it that we're going to 9%? Why wouldn't we consider 6%? And not more than double the amount we're charging the employees?
Again, the 9% was the rate that was provided to us by our insurance advisors at the time when we requested the estimate for fiscal year 17. Why not, so that's why the 9%-
But didn't that amount change?
That amount changed, yes, to 4%-
Okay.
Subsequent to the original. And again, the reason why I'm recommending that we maintain that is because as quickly as it went from nine to four, it can go back up to nine or some other amount. If you look at the national averages that are being looked at, they equal to or exceed the 9%. And again, if there are ways, if we collect too much funds and put too much money into the health insurance reserve, there are ways that we can return those funds back to the employee. And if you consider a health, consider an insurance company, because that's basically by being a self-insured, and any health, I mean, any insurance company has reserves to make sure that they can pay out future claims. All we're doing is establishing a prudent fiscal policy so that we can maintain, and again, safeguard everybody involved. This is, this should be not, I understand your concern.
No, I don't think you do.
Well, I think I do.
Mr. Miller, there are other options, you know, but why 9% when we know it's only going up 4%? Why not 6%?
We do not know. We, these are future outcomes.
I've had that discussion, too. Okay. Thank you.
I think one of the things that's happening is, I'm looking down here, and the number of amendments we have to go through, we've been here for about two hours. The health insurance isn't on the table, your amendment on whether or not to give employees a pay increase, so kind of get back on track on that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, that should be on the table also, so maybe I'll have to do an amendment on that for the regular meeting.
I didn't say we shouldn't do it. I'm just saying we should stick to what we have in front of us.
Okay, it's all connected, but that's okay.
Yeah. Is anyone else having discussion? Alderman Pfeiffer?
Can I just ask one question about COLAs in general? Alderman Finlayson laid out the history, obviously, these are usually done in the context of bargaining, whether it's IVB or traditional bargaining. Is, for those folks who've been on the council longer than I have, or folks who were, sit across the table, is there precedent for giving a COLA outside of something that's bargained? Because I see the argument why you would, you know, I mean, I'm not against COLAs. I think probably we should, we should make that available to our employees. The question is, how do you do it outside of a bargaining operation? Is there, have we ever done that?
Well, may I speak to it?
Yeah.
We are in traditional bargaining. IVB broke down-
Sure.
-a month or two ago. And so the proposal on the table from the unions to all of us was a 2% pay rate. We have not responded.
No, I'm talking more historically. Have we ever, have we approved some sort of COLA outside of the bargaining process?
Usually it's a give and take.
Bargaining is never broken down like this, so we're in a unique situation.
But that's kind of my point, I guess, is like, I mean, right, there's risk involved in everything. There's risk in bargaining breaking down for the people who are responsible for it. There is, Mr. Mayor, right, there's only one mayor at a time, right? So there's risk in all of that. The question is, should we try and do this outside of that, which then would have some impact on the bargaining process likely outcome, or not, or stay, it would stay broken? I'm trying to understand how, if we're sympathetic to giving the employees a raise, how the hell do we do it in the context of bargaining that's either going to happen or not happen, or broken down, or hasn't broken down? I guess, I'm looking for some guidance of people who've touched this issue a lot longer than I have.
If I can interject before Tom goes, I think one of the things people alluded to earlier was the give and take. We asked employees to pay more in healthcare, more to their pension, and they were given a 10% raise. So if we go this route without bargaining, and we say, you're going to get a 1% raise without saying you're going to work 40 hours instead of a 35-hour work week or anything on their end, what guarantees do we have? Or it's kind of putting, you know, the cart before the horse. It's just my opinion on it. But, Mr. Andrews, your experience?
Well, in my experience, and Mr. Leahy may correct me on this, but my experience is there's nothing that prohibits you from doing this. There was no agreement during the IVB process, or in, if we lopst into traditional bargaining, as Alderman Finlayson says, there was no agreement in either forum on this. So it's strictly a matter at this juncture before you all.
Well, the ball is in our court, because they made the last proposal to all of us. So we can respond by offering them a 1%. And we don't have to go back into the process to do that. Do you think we do, Mr. Andrews? Okay.
Well, I think, if there's no other discussion, we should vote on that now. Alderman Littman?
Thank you, I'll be brief. One, I just want to, I don't get the chance to say this very often, I agree with your premise that we should not be giving a COLA out of the practice of the negotiations. Two, my larger perspective on the issue is that we should be keeping the total payroll costs, so not just the salaries, but total, including health, as a fixed percent of the total budget. And so then we have options. We can raise total revenues by raising taxes or increasing revenue some other way. You can have fewer employees and treat the remaining employees better with COLAs and increases. Or you can have lower salaries but more employees. But either way, you end up, I think, fixing the percent that you want to have payroll be a part of your budget keeps a constant, and I think is a healthy way to move forward.
I agree. The last final thing I'll say before the vote is, the 1%, I think sometimes we look at it in a vacuum, which is, the employee gets 1%. If they're in the VIVA program, and the 3% of their salary goes towards it, that's now increased with the 1%. We contribute to the employee state pension fund. Now we've increased that as well, the contribution we make. So it affects it across the board as well.
Mr. Mayor, the employees pay for the VIVA, we don't pay for that.
Mr. Miller, I believe 3% comes out of their salary, and it's, not comes out of their salary, the city contributes 3% of their salary in account for not signing up for the pension.
But they also make a contribution.
But we do, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But he was suggesting that it was the city contributing, but the employees pay for that.
Unfortunately, it's a mess.
Right. Okay. Yeah, so it's not in a vacuum. They do pay their share, and we pay ours.
Sure, but it will go up, though. It's like a 401K plan. If you're making more, and they contribute more, sure.
Everything is going to go up, absolutely, except for their base salary.
Right. Alderman Budge?
I think one thing we need to keep in mind is that all of this needs to be done in the context of the real world. The city employees are already, as in the aggregate, receiving salary increase on the order of 3% or 3.5%. Now, because of the way it's structured, they're not all getting, some of them are getting it, some of them aren't. But that is weighing it, 3.5% is well in excess of the current inflation rate, and it's well in excess of the rate of economic growth of Anarundel County. And we cannot keep growing wages in excess of the economic growth of our own area and expect to stay afloat very long. It's just not going to work. So I don't think this is a viable proposal.
Give Alderman Finlayson the last word on the, before we vote.
I'd just like to remind us that we're talking about the employees who provide the services. Now, if we want to cut employees, we should do that. But you cannot do that without cutting programs. We have to be realistic. You know, our employees do something to satisfy our residents, whether it's trash removal or wrecks in parks, whatever the department. So they all have a responsibility to live up to a standard that we've set for service for the city. And what has been negotiated has been negotiated. Whether I agree with it or not, or whether any of us agree with it or not, if we want to talk about making that change, this is not the setting. This is the setting for us to decide how we're going to treat our employees over the next fiscal year. If you want to go back into bargaining in the fall and make changes to the steps and everything else, you have that ability to do that. But this is not the time. Those steps were set in place prior to any of us sitting here. And so we're going to live with it, but we should not make our employees pay the price for what we're not in agreement with.
All right. So to be clear, what we're voting on is to increase all city employee salary by 1%, and that'll be offset by 3% paying tax rate increase, which I understand includes the Finance Committee's name.
It's not part of the vote.
Okay. So what would you like the tax increase to be?
Well, you can stop after-
Sufficient amount to cover. I mean, I mean, just to help Alderman Finlayson out, I, yeah, I mean, from my perspective, the amendments that the Finance Committee have a favorable recommendation on from our colleagues, I think now the work begins for those of us who made those things, to try and figure out with all of you how we get to a majority of folks, and that's going to happen in other meetings and, you know, ongoing discussions, but this is a helpful way to look at. So I think, I mean, she's gone farther than we went in the Finance Committee in saying that she would raise the taxes, but you'd raise it the appropriate amount to cover the cost of it, and no more. So for the purposes of talking about the amendment, I think that's-
And I think we should have done that on the Finance Committees. We should have voted for the tax increase with it. But for this one, we'll say whatever the appropriate amount is to cover the 1%.
Yeah, we did move that.
Because that is based upon my proposal with Alderman Arnett. We can remember the last one.
Well, this is a straw poll. Poll, it's not an actual vote, so yes. Voting for the 1% and whatever that will calculate to tax rates-wise.
Alderman Budge?
No.
Alderman Pan?
No.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
No.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes.
Alderman Littman?
No.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
And Mayor Pendleton?
No. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll reconvene here at 5:20. We are now back in session, and we will pick up from where we left off.
Another one. Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to read some information into the record, please.
Sure.
This comes from Melissa Layman, from the Assistant Finance Director. Thank you, Melissa. Per your request, the FY '17 salary projections include approximately 130 employees eligible for step increases, as opposed to 50% of the 600. We're talking about 130 employees. Just wanted that accurate information out there. Thank you.
So the next amendment are from Finlayson and Kirby, and I'll let them speak to it. For the Office of Emergency Management.
Like, I'm sure most of you, not all of you are aware, the Office of Emergency Management, the director is, the director is, and we have one assistant in that department, and there's one, again, the title, and we have two, our university of Maryland, and during this snowstorm-
Past winter. It came to my attention that they have no overtime budget. So the employees in that department work 24 hours a day when the EOC is open, and they don't get overtime. If it's beyond their work week, and they are always on task, they make sure that everything runs smoothly there, and there- runs smoothly there, and they're there. When they close the EOC, but the phone lines are still open so that residents can call in with their concerns, they take the phones home with them, and sleep with them under their pillows, so that they can be responsive. I was amazed, but that's what they do, and that's what they have been doing. So my amendment here is to add $10,000 to the budget, so that the Department of Emergency Preparedness has a overtime budget. They do have an operating budget, and that's exactly $7,000. So the whole department runs on $7,000, but they have no budget for overtime. So my amendment is to add $10,000 to overtime.
Discussion? Alderman Budge?
Point of order, I guess. The, I'm looking at the March 15th budget pro forma, that I believe is what we're supposed to be voting on. And the Fire Department is listed as a whole, the Office of Emergency Management is not broken out from the Fire Department, so I'm wondering how this amendment would be applied to the pro forma.
$10,000 would be added to the Fire Department overtime budget.
May I ask, Mr. Miller, where is their $7,000 operating budget? What line item is that in?
The entire budget for Emergency Management is a, it's a wrap-up of all the different programs of the Fire budget, so it's part of the budget, it's Fire budget itself.
So where can we find the $7,000 for Emergency Management? It's not broken out, is what you're saying?
If you take a look at the program budget, those detailed sheets of programs, that's where it's broken out.
Okay, so it is broken out in, okay. So would this, could we do a breakout line item like we do for their operating expenses?
Yeah, but at the end of the day, it would be rolled up into the, please, I mean, please, into the Fire overtime budget.
Okay. I was hoping Chief Stokes was gonna still be here.
You would see it in the, again, in the detailed budget, in the program budget.
Mr. Miller, you don't have to look it up for me, I just.
No, I'm just, for, for, the, the landscape schedule, it has all the different departments and all the different programs. Fire has, as part of their Fire budget, has Emergency Management.
Okay.
It would be part of that. And at the end, it would roll up.
Okay.
To this budget here, and, but it would only have one number for overtime.
Okay, I understand that. So could we, in the big budget?
Yeah.
List OEM overtime?
Yes.
Yes. Not that one, the big one.
In the program budget, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
I had a, a brief chance to consider this this afternoon, and although I have not verified it, and I would ask your permission to do so between now and the next time we get together with Chief Stokes, but I believe Chief Stokes has enough money in his overtime appropriation, which he manages very, very well during the course of the year, to be able to cover what I believe Chief Simmons said when he was here a couple weeks ago, that about $10,000 would cover his overtime needs, assuming all of his folks are FLSA qualified to, to earn overtime. But if it's just a matter of $10,000, I would like to verify with Chief Stokes that within his existing appropriation, he would be able to cover that expense.
That was one of his enhancements, I believe, so we should have that, somebody should have, whoever received their enhancements, you should have that.
Anyone else? Discussion?
But I, it's easy to verify or not, whether he could cover or not, I think, but that amount of money, I'm pretty confident Chief, as skilled as he is in managing overtime, he would.
Alderman Lippman?
Just a question, were the people eligible for this overtime, or any of them union employees, or all of them, or what?
I think they're unrepresented.
They what?
Unrepresented.
Unrepresented, and?
I think.
Verify who's eligible, who's not. Contract people, for example, would not be.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I, I, I do wanna follow up, 'cause I'm positive that Chief Stokes told me he submitted an enhancement. So that says to me that he can't consume this within his existing budget, or he wouldn't have submitted an enhancement.
Well, there were no enhancements this year, so I'm not sure what he would've submitted or to whom. I have not, I have not seen any department head enhancements this year, last year perhaps, but.
I asked specifically about this year, so I'm sorry he's not here. We'll bring it back.
Madam City Clerk?
Alderman Budge?
Given the amount of confusion on the question at this point, I'd pass.
What are we voting on?
If we wanna support the Office of Emergency Management's overtime budget by $10,000.
Alderman Pan? Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Yes.
Alderman.
Yes.
Alderman Kirby?
Yes.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Alderman Arnett?
No.
And Mayor Pedalini?
I will say no, based on the confusion, but likely to vote yes, once we have the details worked out. All right, the next set of amendments we have, Alderman Lippman stepped out, so we will jump to the Budge panelies, or actually, are we doing the CIP one separately, or are we doing this now?
I accidentally put that in a section, in fact, I have CIP amendment, not Budge amendment.
But I believe that was the last, oh, we can go to the CIP amendments till we get back. So let's, let's do that. Alderman Kirby, do you wanna go with your proposed amendment?
Where?
And the iPad I have, it goes Kirby Amendment, Lippman, then it goes Budge panelies, classification, which?
Kirby Amendment.
No, we are, but we're gonna do Alderman Kirby's first, and then Alderman Lippman's, and then Budge panelies. Is that the order in which it appears?
It's an Alderman Kirby, but they have two amendments, they're not really there anymore.
Okay. We'll do them out of order till Alderman Lippman gets back. Alderman Kirby?
Well, this, this amendment speaks for itself, basically, and I just wanna keep it on the table. I, I think I've been satisfied to a large extent by talking to Mr. Gerald earlier today. So I think we know the concerns over there, so at this, at this time, you know, I, I don't wanna write it into a budget. I don't wanna write it into a budget. He's done some things over there, and there are a few more concerns that we're on the same page.
Any other discussion?
Unnecessary, I think we need to go on the budget.
Right. Alderman, just for the record, this is, add the money for Bar Bud Lane back into the budget.
So I have no.
Yeah. You wanna be the one to tell Gerald that we are?
We did him. You unanimous?
I'm there.
Alderman Arnett?
I have no problems with the particulars of this amendment, or the one for Cornhill, but I do have a problem, because we went through a process, every one of us has things that we would like to bring back to the table after the fact and consider, and I don't know that we have the time to do that. But if we're going to start doing these piecemeal, then I certainly would like to have an opportunity to bring mine back to the table.
You certainly have that right. Any other discussion? Well, we were just about, well, we're just about to vote on Alderman Kirby's, we're voting if we wanna add Bar Bud Lane back into the CIP budget, thank you, for this fiscal year. Thank you, no comment.
Alderman Budge?
Well, I would say that since the sponsor doesn't wanna add it back in, I would say no.
Withdrawn.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you, all right, okay. Well then, we don't need a vote, we'll go to the Lippman amendments.
For an explanation, 'cause I would like to know, 'cause the residents wanna know why it's being withdrawn.
Okay, it's, it's being withdrawn simply because I, there, there are some, there are some real law things that needs to occur over there. He's done some studies, Mr. Gerald has done some real studies over there. He feels that at this point in time, that he can take care of the ice problem that's at the base of the street, and move ahead with getting those sidewalks done. So I don't, the, the entire scope, the scope of the entire project, at this point, I don't think we need to put back in the budget. Right, there's some land acquisitions, yes, problems there as well, yes.
Mr. Gerald, could you speak to it, please?
Yes, I can. So what we, I think, so, so there's three basic work requirements that are still required at Bar Bud. One is to address the drainage issues. We've already paved it, so paving was one of the main things, the road was in bad condition, needed to be resurfaced, and we did that in December. The original design for the project had a storm drain running right down the center of the road, the entire length, with inlets on both sides to, to capture the storm water. We've solved some of the drainage issue with the paving, we put, we put some curbs on some of the worst parts where, where water was sheet flowing across the street, so we put curbs there to stop that. We're gonna add additional drainage with stormwater funds that we have, that are already programmed. If we do the sidewalks, which is the last piece that they're really interested in, we'll have to acquire easements to do that. So there's some discussion of, of how we wanna do infill sidewalks on a citywide basis. If we wanna look at betterments, like we're looking at betterments for the, for the water system on Main Street, so we can have sprinkler systems when we do the Main Street rebrickings is one thought. So we really need to, to dig more into how we do infill sidewalks. So that's really the piece that we're not gonna do. We've done the paving, we're gonna do the drainage, we're gonna postpone the sidewalks for now until we can better determine how to do those.
Is there something that can be done to eliminate the accumulation of ice at the Forest Drive entrance? Because that seems to be, from what I've heard from the residents, the most pressing piece. So is there some technique that you can use to do something different right there, so that that would stop?
Right, so that's, that's the, the part of the drainage issue that we're gonna address with the stormwater money that we already have, is, is to do something to either grate it, or put a pipe under the road, as a cover, or do something to, to make sure that the water doesn't accumulate there.
Okay.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Mr. Gerald, will that be done by the next winter season?
We've already started the study out there to see what's gonna be required for the, for the drainage project. It all depends on how quickly we can finish the design and get it contracted, to do the work. So I would hope that we would be able to.
Okay, good, thank you.
All right, well, since it's been removed, we'll go on to the next set, which are from Alderman Lippman, and I'll let him speak to those.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, hopefully you each had a chance to see, apologize it was sent reasonably late, earlier this week, I proposed a number of amendments with the goal of, A, coming up with more cuts than enhancements, for various reasons, including one, trying to address some of the issues we're talking about today, and also to, to aspire towards a tax, providing some tax relief to our taxpayers, and providing additional money towards the fund balance, while also addressing a, a few needs that I thought were essential for us to address. And so I'll go in order to the spreadsheet I provided to everybody. First, the first proposed enhancement is creating a position that I would, as a draft, I would call Spanish Services Coordinator. This is a person that would report to the city manager, for the reasons that the person would be responsible for ensuring that all city services are available to people that speak Spanish and not English. This is, originates from both a federal and state law, in that, that those laws establish a, refer to having a limited English proficiency program. One has been drafted for the city a number of years ago, and has not been acted on, but I think it is essential that we do it. We currently have people who are, that speak Spanish that wanna open businesses, that don't speak English, have a difficulty. I think this is a, relatively an opening salary at $45,000, $60,000 with full benefits, as far as payroll taxes, and so that is my proposal. Do you wanna discuss one at a time, or all together?
I think that's the way we've been doing them, so.
Just to stop there and?
Sure. Any discussion from colleagues on council? Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
I, I have a comment, and this may be right, like, totally out in left field, but I'm gonna say it. I'm looking at a Spanish Service Coordinator, which I think is, is a noble suggestion, and it's a positive. And then I go to the second one, and it says, "Two police officers," which is good, "for hacker," which connotes a negative.
It doesn't say, say hacker?
Well, it says, "Public housing." Okay. Public housing. I just find that a little disconcerting. Why can't we have a, a public housing service coordinator, and one police officer? I mean, it just, like I said, it's, I mean, I was a state's attorney for 20 years, I know what it sounds like, and I don't like it. I really don't. It, it doesn't ring good to my ears. I like Spanish Service Coordinator, don't get me wrong, but why can't we have a public housing service coordinator?
I'd be happy to respond to, if the question's directed towards me.
And I'm just.
Alderman Lippman?
I'll, I'll propose the second amendment. The, the second amendment is for two additional police officers. The, the point is to address the fact that violent crime has increased 60% year-to-date. It also, I'll, I'll note that the current violent crime incidence of 99 exceeds any other total year-to-date, going back all the way since 2008. So this suggestion is for two officers to help with foot patrols. The two officers would be deployed at the, the pleasure of the Chief of Police, and so this is, again, listening to our experts, and an expert here is the Police Department. Where there is a need now, is that area, and would be sure that in a different day, different week, different month, different year, those two officers could be deployed anywhere, but it's trying to raise, be responsive to the requests for where it's, where it's needed.
I, I got that.
Okay, so I'm not sure how that's disrespectful, it's trying to be responsive to where the request is needed.
I, I got that, okay, but I'm going back to something Mr. Rao said. We need to look at a holistic approach to how we service the public housing community. And I'm all for ca, believe me, law enforcement, I'm all for law enforcement, I'm all for cameras, I'm all for that, but this just, to me, it sends a bad signal, a bad, and I got, I got the information, the 60%, I got all that, I understand all that, don't get me wrong. It just, for my residents, some of my residents, it just doesn't sound good. It just, it, 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 it doesn't sound good. And, and like I said, I may be, like, far afield or whatever, but why can't we have a public housing service coordinator? And I got you, but I'm saying, on a holistic approach, we have to look at it from an educational point of view, a healthcare point of view, and a whole bunch of other point of views that the police can't necessarily address. And I'm looking at a more balanced approach.
Okay, let, let me, I'll try to answer that question.
Do you understand where I'm coming from?
I think I do, it's something, it's in a perspective I hadn't considered, and I, so I certainly appreciate having that additional perspective to think about. I think it's an additional issue, frankly. I think if you take them as standalone issues, there is a need for Spanish Services Coordinator, which helps, after Ward 5, Ward 3 has more Spanish-speaking people than any other ward.
I got that.
So it's, it's a, on that issue, I think it's a need that will help people in all wards, for all department, city services. I think you've identified perhaps a different need in addition to, and certainly you're welcome to propose that, and I think we could engage of whether there should be more efforts to support the people in public housing for areas beyond crime, reducing crime. So I think that's an additional point you raised, and not so much as a, a negative on the, this proposal, but perhaps identifying a different position. For the police officers, it's the same, I'd answer it the same way, in the sense that it's a different need. We have the need, I believe, for additional police officers. As you know, it also addresses the adequate public facilities requirement, as it stands today, requires that we have more police officers than we do today. If there's additional, additional needs for that segment of the population that you're trying to address, then I'd say make that amendment.
But what I'm saying is, you can't look at it as two different issues. I mean, I would venture to say, probably 40% of my population is African-American, probably 40% may be white, and the other, or say 35, and the other 25 is Hispanic. So I mean, I get it, don't get me wrong. So I mean, I get it, don't get me wrong, but I'm looking at it more of an unbalanced situation, coming from a ward that's that diverse, and I have to look at it that way, because I'd be derelict in my duties if I didn't. And I have to look at it from a vision and a perspective that maybe nobody else who has that diversity on this council could look at it, and it's up to me to bring it to the attention of everybody else, because of who I'm representing. The prism for me is totally different, and that's what I'm saying. When I look at this, I, it just, it doesn't sit well with me at all.
Alderman Finlayson?
I have a master's degree in cultural diversity from the University of Wisconsin. And rarely in my post-education career have I seen, I shouldn't say rarely, but not too frequently, do I see examples of lack of understanding from a cultural perspective. And that's what I see here. I think Rhonda read this the same way I did. We need a Hispanic coordinator for the Hispanic community, and we need policemen for the African-American community. Now, I'm sure that's not what you intended, but that's how it looked from a cultural perspective. And this is where cultural sensitivity comes into play. When everybody learns a little bit more about other cultures, so you'll know what negatives and what positives there are. My first reaction, not too different from Rhonda's, I had requested of the mayor and the city manager six months ago, not longer, that we hire an African-American resource person. Someone that I thought I knew for a fact and still know could help us in the African-American community to address some of the issues we have, not the least of which is crime. That proposal was frowned upon, obviously, wasn't supported, we don't have it. Thank you, Mr. Andrews, because he wanted to move forward with it. I don't see the same interest here so far, and we just started. But if we want to be fair, then we will come up with a mechanism so that we address the needs of not only the Hispanic population, but also the African-American population. So if you want to include in this an African-American resource person also, I'm right with you, okay? But we're going to have to speak to all segments of our community.
Alderman Littman?
I think what the police officer suggestion has been misinterpreted as saying, it's not to address the crime being perpetrated by people in public housing, it's the opposite. It's to protect the people in public housing from the crime that's being committed on their property, from people from outside the city, as we've been reading about in our police reports. This person has been arrested with a residence of Glen Burnie. This person has been arrested from elsewhere, and we've been hearing that in council meeting after council meeting, that people are coming to those properties to commit crime. And so I was offering it as a response to their request that we've been hearing of, please help us, protect us, as a piece of the solution. So it certainly wasn't a suggestion that the, that community needed, was causing the crime, it's what I said. As far as whether it should be different groups, the issue here is a language barrier. There are certainly many types of barriers, but the issue I'm trying to address is a language barrier, and that, the Spanish population is the one group that is a sizable group that has a language barrier.
Mr. Littman, coming from an African-American person, all my life, and I get what you're saying.
No, no, not all your life.
I get what you're saying, but, and Sheila and I didn't talk about this at all. This is the first time I have truly laid eyes on this, and when I saw this, it immediately jumped out at me. And what you're saying is true. What people are saying is it's not the people in public housing. But what, the message that this sends in the eyes of an African-American person is not good. That's all I'm saying. It's just not. It's, and it's a cultural thing. It truly, truly is.
I appreciate it.
And I know you didn't, this wasn't the intent, I know that, but what I'm saying is, when an African-American person looks at this on his face, that's what they see. That's exactly what they see. Now, as to the language barrier, you're right, but language comes in many forms, many forms. And, you know, some of us can go down to some of these public housing communities and have no clue what the people are talking about. That's a language barrier, and it may not be language as far as Spanish, or Italian, or Greek, or whatever it is, but it's still a language barrier. Believe me, we went down to that meeting the other day, and there's a language barrier. I mean, there is one. And that's all I'm saying. This jumped out at me immediately. We didn't talk about this. This is the first time I've laid eyes on it. But this is, this is what this is saying to a person of my color. That's what it's saying, that we need two police officers in public housing, but we need a Spanish service coordinator for the Spanish-speaking community. Got no problem with that. But maybe we need one police officer and one public housing service coordinator. I mean, that gives it more balance, and it doesn't give the perception, which I know it was not intended at all, I know that, I know that, but that's what it's saying. That's the perception it throws out there to folk, because I'm a folk, and that's what it threw out to me. And it's, that's sending a bad message, it really is.
Thank you for the suggestion.
Sure. And I think we're here all to kind of culturally make everybody aware of some of the, and that's the whole point of boards and commissions and all, and having different people from different places and all, that's the whole point of that. And I think we are old enough and have enough intelligence to be able to have these conversations in a setting that is not disparaging to anybody, but it's more of an enlightening sense that I see it as, okay? But I can't sit here and pretend that what I saw is acceptable, okay?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I thought you were hiring or had hired, or you had someone on your staff who was supposed to be the Hispanic coordinator, correct?
I did. I saw the need early on. Daniel Bucelli, he was my Hispanic liaison, so he did constituent services, and also worked in the Hispanic community. He had taken a better job on the Hill and left us, and we've been looking to fill his shoes.
And how long ago has that been?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So there is a position potentially that could be made into the Spanish coordinator's position if he saw fit, correct?
There's not funding in the budget for that position, to my knowledge, and also this, as I've described the position, it would be something different. So that was someone who reported to the mayor and would be at the mayor's discretion of how that person would be used. This is someone, I think it's an important distinction, that would be reporting to the city manager and whose job would be to do the outreach to all of our city departments to make sure that their services, that there's a communication between their services and the city residents.
Well, since we haven't approved the budget yet, we can do anything with positions we want to do with them.
Well, that's what I'm trying to do.
And I did have the opportunity to see this in a previous meeting, so I know what's coming. So, you know, maybe there's a position down there further in the red marks that could be turned into what you want it to be. At the same time, I'm going to insist that we have an African-American liaison also. The $150,000 sounds pretty low. Have you checked the cost of, is that inclusive of benefits and drainage?
That's the information I got from the finance department.
Thank you.
Let's take the First Amendment first, which is number one for the Spanish service coordinator.
Alderman, okay.
The Alderman Littman makes the statement that this is a service that's required by federal and state law that we're not providing. I would like to hear what the city manager has to say about that.
Perhaps the city attorney as well. Perhaps the city attorney, since it's a legal interfission.
Between the two of them.
I am not specifically familiar with any requirement that would cause the city, particularly given that most of the federal and state mandates go toward social services, which, as you've been talking about, the city does not specifically provide. However, there are some things the Small Business Administration has put into place that I have not kept up with, that I did not see as mandates, I saw as strong suggestions. And I'm happy to look at it, and before you all come back, get you a specific answer, but I would be surprised if there was a federal and a state mandate that required, excuse me, the city to go so far as to demand that we undertake responsibilities based on language and cultural responsibilities unless we start to get into suspect classes, which are, you know, constitutional. So I'll be happy to look at it and get right back to you.
Alderman Budge, the language that's used is, if you're getting our money, then this is what we want you to do type of language. So both for federal and the state copied the language. So if you're getting state money, if you're getting federal money, then you need to provide services to your entire, these significant populations. And I'll be, I thought I forwarded it already to Mr. Leahy, but I'll check my records if I haven't, I'll be happy to pass it along.
If we're getting more money, I'll be happy to say yes.
Well, it's not that you get more money for doing it, it's if you're getting money, period. So certainly we're getting federal money, and we are getting state money already.
Madam City Clerk?
Alderman Budge?
I am amenable to considering both the Spanish and the African-American liaison, provided we can find a way to cover the expense.
Alderman Pan?
What he said.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
I'll have what they're having.
Me too. Alderman Littman?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby? Alderman Pfeiffer? Alderman Arnett? And Mayor Penalini?
I'm going to say what Joe said as well. The second one is for two additional police officers.
I think I've covered it already, if anyone has any response, be responsive.
Alderman Budge?
Is this raising the police authorization from 113 to 115?
My understanding was it was 114 to 116, but if it's 113, I'll stand corrected.
Well, whatever it is.
Yeah, it's 114.
It would seem to me that we might want to make sure, get the police fully staffed before we start authorizing more staff. It seems that we're perpetually below the line, and I think that's in part because there's training requirements and things like that, but I've had several conversations with the chief, and he'll never say no to more officers, but I think he believes firmly that if he could get the full staff, he could do a lot more. Right now, he effectively has 95, and getting up to 114 would be a huge step forward. So I'm somewhat lukewarm about this until we get, until we see what happens when we get fully staffed. Now, the directive use of this, I think we've already heard a lot of dialogue, we're going to increase this chief's allocation, let's increase his allocation, and we'll let him figure out where best to use it.
Madam City Clerk? Alderman Felison?
Yes, I'm totally supportive of increasing police, no question about it. I'm a little concerned about the wording, but I guess that really doesn't matter, because the statistics don't really pan out. Most of the crimes that are occurring in public housing are domestic. Foot patrols won't help that, but we still need the officers. Other jurisdictions have tried, such as in Boston, have tried policing in public housing. They're moving away from that model as opposed to moving to it. So if this is adding two policemen to the police department, I think it's a step. Thank you.
Alderman Kirby?
I, if this is contingent on the Harbor Master, I definitely, I would say no, flat out, because I don't want to give the harbor to anybody that needs to remain to Annapolis. That's number one. The second thing is, I think with the same monies, if we had those types of monies, I think it would be well-spent with Mr. Brown with the Housing Authority. He has a plan right now for four bodies, that it takes nothing for him to move into law enforcement officers. They've got all the accreditation there, home and security personnel, they carry firearms, and he's asking for four bodies. If we really want to do a plan, then if we want to have better security in our public housing developments, we need to work with Mr. Brown and HACCA, and if we can provide some dollars, let's get those four bodies. I think he has a very noble plan. Alderman Arnett has heard it, Alderwoman Finlayson has heard it, there's some of us that's heard that plan. So if, I'd love to see him get them. He's got the deployment plan as well as, and $150,000 is a bunch of money, but at the expense of the Harbor Master, I would never do it.
Alderman Arnett?
So Alderman Littman was not aware of these discussions that Kenny and I have been having with the security coordinator of public housing, but I think Kenny's right. I think that would be a much more effective expenditure right now than expenditure for police officers. Again, let's get the police up to force and see what they need, but Mr. Brown does have a very aggressive program in mind, a very strong presence in mind, and if we were going to be using $150,000, which I don't think his program would come close to costing, I would much rather see it be directed that way. And again, that's having hindsight on Jared's recommendation here, because he wasn't privy to those discussions.
Anyone else?
HM is Harbor Master, so this is funded through eliminating Har, I agree with Alderman Kirby, I can't eliminate the Harbor Master, I want the positions, but, and Mr. Brown is only asking for $100,000, if I'm correct, I suppose we'd save $50,000.
Madam City Clerk?
Alderman Budge?
I would say no to the Littman amendment and yes to the Kirby-Arnett amendment.
Which is defined as, can you spell that out? How would you define their amendment?
Which is $100,000 for Mr. Brown's proposal.
Let's focus on the amendment we have in front of us, but I do understand. Alderman Pan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Aye.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
I'll have what Alderman Budge is having.
Alderwoman Finlayson? So we're voting on the amendment as it's written?
Yeah.
I'm abstaining.
Alderman Littman?
Aye.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Pfeiffer? Alderman Arnett?
Not at this time.
And Mayor Penalini?
Not at this time. Alderman Littman, the floor is yours.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Alderman Littman, are you going to rework this one and bring it back?
I think when, as a proper amendment, it would just be to have two officers, period. The explanation is just meant to be helpful, so I don't think the amendment itself would list the reasoning, period. So I think that the amendment itself would just be, provide two additional police officers.
Okay. I didn't know in light of the amendment to the amendments.
I'm certainly open-minded to discussing everything that we've been discussing.
I think it's important we keep the two together, the increased service and the offset, because otherwise we're going to go through here and everyone's going to vote yes to all the increases and no to all the offsets, and we're back at square one.
Thank you, Mayor, because I agree, and at the risk of the cuts, they're never going to look attractive, no cuts are going to look attractive, so I don't mean to misconstrue what I'm about to say as that, but I would be disappointed to see the cuts adopted and not the enhancements. The whole point is, I'm trying to be responsible by having offsetting cuts to match and frankly exceed the enhancements I'm proposing.
I appreciate, I think the opposite will be true, I think they'll vote for the enhancements and not the cuts.
You know, again, you know, I've read it, I've read it, I read it earlier today, and, you know, all I have to see is eliminating the Harbor Master. That's just a gem in this city right now, and I'm not willing to give that to SP Plus under any circumstance. They haven't proven themselves in traffic right now. I mean, they've got some work to do, they haven't even had a six-month review. They haven't even had a six-month review. There's just absolutely no way that I would get two police officers at the expense of the Harbor Master and privatize the services down here on the city dock. I don't think nobody around this theater is gonna do that. I don't, of course, anybody.
Okay. You want to speak to the next amendment?
Sure. So again, just to reiterate, because I think it's a point worth saying, none of these final cuts do I take in a flipway or a lightweight. This is not about any of the people that would be directly aligned, so I tried to be careful to talk about positions. So starting with the first, I was surprised, shall we say, to learn that the top three employees cost the city a half a million dollars for the Department of Wrexham Park. Certainly an important service. I don't think it is a top core service. I think they do important work, and I'd like to see that work continue, but I think the, we have two capable chiefs. I think the city manager is a very capable person and can manage the two chiefs without having a, an additional director. And that's where the amendment stops. There are various things we can do to lighten the load. We can start to talk about finding out more information about outsourcing the Pittmore Rec Center. It's not contingent in this amendment, it's just suggesting that we explore it. I'm not saying I would commit to that path before learning more. The, the other parts of Wrexham Park is Harbor Master, and there are ways to make that more efficient as well, which we'll get to, but this is, this first-line item is specifically to eliminate the director position. Additional corollary thought is to do a reorganization that is similar to what we did with HR. I would have this as a, have a manager of Wrexham Park paid at a lesser salary report to the city manager, but again, that's not required by voting, supporting this amendment.
All right. Any discussion? Alderwoman Finlayson?
Um, Mr. Littman, Alderman Littman, on the surface, this sounds reasonable. Have you actually had a conversation with our current director to find out the scope of his responsibility?
I've not discussed with him this post-cut, if that's what you're asking.
Because I think it's far greater than we imagine. I don't remember quite how many parks we have, but there are a lot, more than five or 10. Forty, forty-plus in our small seven-square-mile city. The Harbor Master, even though we've had issues there recently, they have, they do a yeoman's job of managing from the water's edge, and to not have somebody who oversees all of that, I don't think we could pay these two chiefs enough to be totally responsible without having someone with whom to answer. Now, I know Mr. Andrews is more than capable, he's, they are, the director has already answered to him, but this would require more hands-on. Yeah, you would have to be down at the Harbor Master's office.
Not that he's complaining.
You know, I just think, you know, the dollar amount sounds unwieldy, but in the big scope of things, I don't think it really is. And it would very much concern me that we're dividing the labor and, and there's not oversight to the degree that you would expect it to be over all of the programs. I mean, between the Pittmore Rec Center and Stanton Center, the number of programs that are offered there, it's incredible. And you and I go there, so we see a lot of the stuff that's there. But I, I see, truly see the value of our directors, because they do bring a different skill set than the Harbor Master has and the director of the parks portion of it. They bring a different skill set, so.
I certainly agree.
I don't think I could support it.
I certainly agree this, that department does important things. I don't think it needs to have a department director paid at the level that we have, all, that all department directors are created equal, all departments, I'm sorry, are created equal. We have two very highly-paid chiefs, $150,000 apiece, who I think are quite capable of providing the oversight necessary to everything you just said, including the Harbor Master's office.
Well, I'm afraid you're just looking at the dollars. Both of those gentlemen, I believe, there may be one female and one gentleman, have been here for a number of years and have worked up to the salaries. They didn't come in as that as a starting salary. And so to say that they're overpaid, that's because of the years of experience they've been here.
I wasn't going there to the chiefs as being overpaid, I'm saying at what their capabilities-
I'm talking about the other two that you just mentioned are making $150,000. But it's been over time.
Mm-hmm.
You know, Alderman Arnett and I sat on this council when we did give parity to all department heads, because we did have the director of Wrexham Park and the director of Transportation and one other, the director of HR, who were all paid less than the other directors. And by the way, those three directors were women. And so we made a conscious effort, because they all come with credentials. They come with a certain number of degrees and certifications in their particular fields. And we didn't think it necessary to pit them against one another or try to, you know, differentiate out. They all came with their own certifications that were necessary for them to do the job, so we did put them all on the same scale. It's unfortunate now that we have no women, and I hope that this administration will see fit, and I know there's lots of qualified women out there, so it's a choice, but that we will, at some point in time, get women in the positions of director. But I, I take great value in, in our director, so to eliminate one, I'm not gonna support it, but thank you.
Okay. I, I thought you would have appreciated the fact that the, we're treating a department that is led by a white male similarly to a department that was led by a female in the sense of recognizing, like with HR, that it is lesser responsibilities than some of the other departments, but.
Well, I guess it depends on how you look at it, because the kids over there swimming in the pool and their parents who are, mm, they'll think that's pretty important, too. So, you know, I think it's all relative.
Yes, exactly, that's exactly the point. It is all important, but it is relative.
So.
Any other discussion? Alderman Arnett?
Yes. I hearken back to those days when we made the decision to do parity, and I'm afraid we did it because it was parity for women rather than because there were equal jobs and equal responsibilities. Now, there was a very important point with the Director of Public Works, because they have the Latchkey Program, and that's a program that requires certification and it's, requires a lot of monitoring, because it's our children, the children of the city. And that was a factor that weighed heavily for me in that, but I, I think we ought to be paying department heads based on level of responsibility and also the critical nature of the work that's being done, rather than because of their gender. So in retrospect, I would rethink, I would have rethought my vote at that time. Other than that, I mean, obviously, none of these are appealing cuts, appealing choices. Every time you make a choice like that, you're dealing with somebody's career, somebody's life. And so none of these can be taken lightly, but there is going to be a point where we are going to have to start making decisions like this. We cannot continue to forestall it, and I give Alderman Littman great credit for digging down and taking the risk, exposing himself, to offer these very sensitive kinds of proposals, and I intend to support him.
Alderman Budge?
Um, yeah, it strikes me that we, just a few days ago, finished voting on a departmental reorganization that I believe was the city manager's proposal, and this wasn't in it. And so I'm wondering if the city manager could tell us on the feasibility of implementing Alderman Littman's proposal.
Well, I guess anything's feasible. The question is, is the most efficient way to do something in terms of organizing and leading work? Wrexham Parks is one of your larger departments, larger than Finance, larger than the new Department of DNEP and Planning and Zoning combined. I think it's larger than Transportation, it's over 70 folks and $4 million. It's a substantial program. It would not be my recommendation to eliminate the director. It would not be my recommendation to have the Parks Manager and the Recreation Manager report to me. I think the, if we're looking at substantial investigation of what kinds of activities this city should or should not continue to do, that's certainly legitimate discussion for this council. It's why we did the priority program budgeting format in the first place, to give you some guidance as to how to engage in that conversation. I would, I would recommend that you attack it from that point first, and then if there are program reductions you want to make, for whatever reasons, then the personnel fallout will, will, will result accordingly. I do not, I'm not a fan of taking specific positions and eliminating those positions from the budget, whether there's a message behind it or not, that would not be my recommendation.
Alderman Budge?
No.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
No.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
No.
Alderman Littman?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Pfeiffer?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
Yes.
And Mayor Penelope?
No.
Alderman Littman?
The next proposal is eliminating $50,000 to support the, the executive director for Annapolis Partnership. The, as you heard at the last council meeting, I think it was last, maybe it was two meetings ago, I think it was two meetings ago, the merger that took place last year has essentially already been undone. We're essentially back to a Main Streets-Annapolis program, which was required in order to continue to get state approval. Before the merger, you'll recall that there was support provided by Lisa Craig and Ms. Brown? Got that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I'm suggesting that we have similar staff available to provide similar support to what existed before, between Hollis Minor, between Consuela, and Lisa Craig, who is still around, that we don't need to additionally fund $50,000 towards the executive director.
Okay. Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Yes. I would like to acknowledge Mr. Doug Smith in the audience today, who is the president now of the Annapolis Partnership. Couple of things I want to say. I would definitely like to hear some feedback from Ms. Minor as well as Mr. Gutwold, who's the director. But I'd also, at some point, and not today, I'd like to, like for Mr. Smith to respond to Alderman Littman's amendment, something in writing, I'd like to see, to give me solace and comfort as to why I should not, why I should vote, or why I shouldn't vote for this amendment.
Alderman Budge?
Um, I'd like to point out a couple of things. One is that the experience prior to last year and finding an executive director for the Main Streets Partnership was not a great one for city staff. The, Annapolis Partnership is, or the, the Main Streets program is required to have an executive director. Housing that in city offices as a city employee and telling that person, telling a city employee who already has another, a different full-time job, that, oh, by the way, you get to do this too, did not work terribly well, and was one of the reasons why we pushed very hard to figure out how to get it outside of City Hall. Setting, getting, sending it back into City Hall, I think, would be a huge step backwards. I understand we can't always make progress, but this would be not only a step backwards for the Main Streets program, but it would be a very, huge step backwards for whatever program is being implemented by whoever's desk this lands on. So it's a double hit. Secondly, I think the idea of bringing it inside and giving it to the existing Economic Development Manager is asking to mix oil and water. The Economic Development Program is designed to market our city to, to businesses that we hope will come to Annapolis and do business here. It's a city-to-business marketing, as it were. The Main Street program's main function is to market the existing businesses in Annapolis to customers in the outside area, to do promotions. It's a very different function, it's a very different kind of marketing, and asking the same person or the same organization to do both at the same time is almost impossible. It takes two different skill sets, two different talents, two different focuses. Unless you find somebody who's very schizophrenic, it's not gonna work. And you can't have our direct, our Chief of Historic Preservation back to do this. We've got enough trouble in that arena. So for those reasons, I'm, well, I've got a few other reasons, but in the interest of brevity, I'll wrap it up and say I am opposed to this proposal.
Can you just add about Ms. Consuela providing the service? You listed why you don't think Ms. Craig or Ms. Minor would be appropriate. What about Consuela Cordell? I'm sorry if I missed-
I would defer to Director Gutwold and Ms. Minor on how they should staff Economic Development.
Just wanted to add comment, everything Joe just said. I mean, Alderman Budge, Alderman Arnett?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I agree with what Alderman Budge says, but I come to a very different conclusion. I think the city has a responsibility to focus on the Main Street program. How we do that, that's an issue, but I think we are mixing oil and water, and I think that the businesses ought to be representing themselves, just like they have for decades. I have always been, and the city attorney can attest to the fact, I've been very uncomfortable about merging these two different entities with all kinds of different legal forms and legal requirements. And to me, the city's responsibility is to do a Main Street program and not to do business for the business community. The business community should take care of the business community, and I see this $50,000 being redirected to the Main Street program as a good redirection, not a bad one, and we'll let businesses take care of business.
Anyone else? Madam City Clerk?
Alderman Budge?
No.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
On hold.
Alderwoman Finlayson? Alderman Littman?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby?
No.
Alderman Arnett?
Yes.
And Mayor Penelope?
No.
Alderman Littman?
Thank you. The, next is addressing staffing in the mayor's office. Currently, the mayor's office has reporting to him the ombudsman, two community relations people, two administrative assistants, and a special events coordinator. Again, every one of them, I'm sure, is providing good service. The question is, can we afford all of that support? And I don't think we can. So you can see the amendments I proposed, reducing the staff by three of those people. I also would note, as you see in my reasoning, that prior years, we cut the administrative support from planning and zoning, from DNEP, from Public Works, and I don't think we've done that to the mayor's office. I appreciate that, there's a lot of sensitivity here. I know I start out with one vote against me, and again, it's certainly nothing personal, it's just trying to be consistent in how we manage the city budget, and keeping a tight limit on overhead- limit on overhead, particularly as a support versus executive function ratio.
Well, just defending my office and everything, I'd have to say that it does seem like you're picking on the office. If we reduce administrative staff in other departments, I don't believe it was by the percentage that you're suggesting we reduce the mayor's budget, or for that, or for a matter of that, as many people as you are. I would say they all do a vital function, and we take special events, for example. Since Felicia's been here, we haven't had a single problem with any event, there's over 100 of them every year. In terms of the ombudsmen and community service people, they're the ones that call every time, they're the ones that handle calls every time somebody calls in and complains. So they're doing all of the work, so then that, it doesn't have to trickle all down to you, so. If you cut the staff in there, you guys are going to get much more phone calls than you're getting now.
Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Alderman Budge?
I'm sorry. Mr. Littman, I, Alderman Littman, I'm sorry, I agree with you on some fronts. We have cut staff in other departments, as you've already mentioned them, and those departments are still reeling from their lack of support. I'm disappointed that you don't give us the total value for the mayor's office, because that's a pretty startling statistic. I don't remember exactly what it was, but it is pretty startling. I do believe our special events coordinator does a yeoman's job, but what's ringing in my head is the meeting that I had at my community on Newtown Drive on Tuesday night, and what I heard from the residents are, "We keep calling the mayor's office and nobody responds." We have a city manager, a position I co-sponsored that legislation to create, with the understanding that we would create an office for the city manager, and he has no staff. So I would like to find a way to shuffle staff around, if need be, get rid of staff, but to give the city manager at least an administrative assistant. And I'm not sure that all of our community relations folks are in our community. They may be in certain communities, and they may be, you know, they come and take the place of the mayor when he's not there, but they're not working to alleviate problems in the community, and that's what those positions are there for. You know, we see a change in tides whenever the administration changes, and new people come in, and there is no rulebook on what your responsibilities are. And so we get the brunt of that, and here we are, because we don't see, and people don't understand, I don't think it's anybody's fault, but they don't know what the responsibilities entail. You know, we have an alms ombudsman, and I know what that job is supposed to do, but it doesn't impact my ward, so I don't know how valuable. So Mr. Mayor, maybe you can show us or explain to us, you mentioned the special events coordinator, but tell us the value so that we can understand that these positions need to be kept. And tell us how we're going to help Mr. Andrews, because he has no staff.
Well, one, when you said people in your community never hear from the mayor's office, as you know, Tara was there and Shayla was there, so they are in the community, and they're all over the city.
That was my meeting, I'm sorry, that was the meeting that I set up.
I know, and two people from the mayor's office were there.
They did.
And they respond well to all areas of the community. But going back to losing staff, I think in the first budget, one of the first things we lost was the assistant city manager position. We went in there, we cut that out of the mayor's budget, that was a high-paid job, and my department was one of the first to take a cut. Leadership by example-
And a female position, I might add, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Well, you did, but if you're going to take cuts, you know, everybody's got to take one, so I've taken one, but in terms of the other positions, they're the same as everything else. They reach out to people, most of it is, you know, I can get you a list of all the volume of calls and emails they've taken over the time, and it's a lot. And if somebody said they called the mayor's office and they never get a response, I'd like for you to follow up with me, instead of just at a council meeting, if you could let me know in advance, and I'll make sure I personally follow up with them.
I'm sorry, I didn't speak to Tara about that today.
Okay. Alderman Budge?
Yeah, this gets to a point that the city manager raised earlier, which was that we should be not addressing specific positions, but addressing programs, and there are no programs for the mayor's office, other than special events. So how do we attack questions in the overhead departments under the program structure?
You're quite correct, because the mayor's office is overhead spread, through all the operating programs. I think you have to ask specific questions about specific functions in the mayor's office, my office, and we will provide that information, of what people do, and how they do it, and how often they do it.
Yeah, and to follow up on that-
I've become particularly adept at Google Mail, one of my favorite things. I'm okay.
But if Mr. Andrews needs help with the city manager monthly's report, Shayla from my office helps out in that, so whenever he needs help, he knows he can always come to my office and ask for that support.
Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Alderman Budge?
I think if we're going to look at trimming the mayor's office, we should have a, we should have before us a, the equivalent of a program sheet or an organizational sheet that tells us what the positions are and what money is attached to them, so that we can look at the whole picture instead of cherry-picking one or two here. So pending that, I will put a hold on my vote and say, "Let's look at that, and then let's make a more informed decision."
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
No.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
I'm going to abstain until I get more information also.
Alderman Littman?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby?
Yeah, I'll stay. Yeah, I'll do that.
Alderman Arnett?
I'm certainly willing to consider more information. I agree with the mayor that this is a heavy set of cuts, but on the other hand, I think every department, every operation should be subject to some trimming to the extent that we need to trim.
Mayor Panalini?
No.
The next one isn't a budget reduction, it's just a reallocation. I couldn't find what his title was, so in this case I had to, I was trying to avoid using people's names, but in this case I didn't have another title, I believe it's a contract employee. Anyway, Mr. Samporos is a contract employee for just under $16,000. His salary has been coming out of the solid waste enterprise fund, I believe he's working on the landfill and solar project. Although he doesn't report to Mr. Jarrell, he reports to the mayor. Because that energy park, although it's going to be an ongoing exercise in management, I am confident and am aware that the director of Public Works and his department can provide the oversight necessary. So this is a suggestion that we transfer his salary to the mayor's office, so that the money comes out of the general fund where I believe it should be, since he's at the mayor's discretion, the mayor's instruction, I meant to say.
I have a question. Now, maybe I'm a little slow. You want to take the 15-6 and give it to the mayor's office, but you want to take these people out. Am I slow?
Nope, you got it.
Okay, I guess I'm missing something, somewhere. What would that money be used for?
He is, Mr. Samporos is operating at the mayor's discretion. This is, look, I'm not trying to cut the mayor's entire staff, he would still have four people, I think, depending on who you're counting. It's to reduce the staff. So if you wanted to focus on eliminating Mrs. Samporos's salary instead of somebody else's, we could have that discussion. He has, obviously, had a much lower salary, and so if he's providing, is working on special projects for the mayor at that amount, I wasn't going to touch it. But if you would like to touch it, that's for you to-
Did you have anything in mind as to what this money would be used for?
No, I don't know what he would be working on, I would let the, certainly let the mayor speak for himself on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The city manager wished to say something.
If I could maybe just expound a bit on what Ted Samporos does and what he brings to the table, he's actually a procurement guy, so he's not, he's not a project manager or project implementation guy. So once we, once we signed the lease for the solar park, it came over to us, and we're managing that, the permitting, the BGE deal, the design construction, he's not really involved with that. So he's, he's more forward-looking for phase two. So he's doing all the negotiations and discussions for phase two, and putting together the request for proposals and all those types of things. So that's really what his expertise is, and, you know, $15,000 for the level of expertise that he brings to the table is a great deal, because we're already making about $100,000 a year off of the solar lease, which, you know, he got that thing off the ground and got it moving, so. I think it's, I think it's appropriate that it be with the landfill, because that's where the project's located, and that's the fund that's benefiting from the lease costs, so that's all going back into the, into the landfill or solid waste fund.
Any other discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Mr. Ray, I'm sorry to interrupt you, I'll withdraw that proposal.
It's withdrawn, do you want to get to your next item?
Sure. The next one is take-home vehicles. We currently have 67 vehicles that are the take-home variety, they total over, a value of over $700,000. This is, I'm sure if there was a majority support for eliminating some of the take-home vehicles, the discussion about which ones would be the next level of discussion. The, the idea that I am proposing is that while vehicles, vehicles are certainly necessary for a significant number of the staff, if we did not allow employees to take them home, the vehicles could be shared on the pool structure that is done for some current vehicles already. So that's generally the proposal.
I have a question.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
Mr. Alderman Littman, do you know where the majority of these vehicles that you are talking about be eliminated, which department they are mainly in?
Yes. So, right now, the police have the most cars, at about $200,000 worth of cars.
I mean, how many cars, would you say?
Let me get to that. Give me one second, I'll give you an answer. Anyway, the long and short of it is, I'm not targeting the police or fire, I am more interested in reducing the number of cars from the remaining departments, which is DNEP, Transit, Public Works, who am I forgetting? I'll pull it back up. DNEP, Public Works, and Transit.
Okay, I guess I need some more direction and clarification from Mr. Andrews.
Take-home cars are assigned, take-home cars is always a pleasant subject to talk about, but take-home cars are allowed as a benefit to the city. Department director makes a determination that to have that car taken home increases efficiency of use of the person who takes that car home, whether it's an inspector, whether it's a police officer, whether it's a firefighter, someone on call from Public Works, whatever the case may be. It's strictly a policy decision for the council, obviously. If you want to eliminate take-home cars, cut it back, then we'll respond accordingly, but you're going to lose some efficiencies in the process. People are going to report in, punch the clock, then go back out, do their inspection, where they could do four inspectors coming in to work in the first place. It's, you know, it's, it's debatable, but we believe that it, it's more efficient to assign take-home cars in certain instances where it's to the benefit of the city, to have somebody on call and be able to respond and/or carry out their job more efficiently.
Do you have a response to that, Mr. Littman, Alderman Littman?
I appreciate that. It is going to be a lot of judgment call. So I've had a number of conversations already about this topic with some of our department directors, and it's going, it's going to be one that employees like it, so it's a benefit that will be taken away, not everyone's going to like that, certainly. The benefit to the city is that if, one, you sell some of the vehicles, there's, A, you get the profit from whatever the value of that car is, and it varies, there's a chart that they update every 30 days on the value of these vehicles, but that means you also save the gas, and you save the wear and tear costs and depreciation that you're going to get for each vehicle. The employees, even in the most honest way possible, taking a vehicle home and then coming back to work the next day, if it's the same location, you know, I drive, lots of people drive their personal cars to, to home and then back to work, and then they have to drive around a work vehicle during the day. So yes, there's going to be a slight loss of efficiency, but whether, I think the judgment on our end is, do we want to provide this, is it a luxury, or is this a, an expense that we can trim?
So if we have a loss of efficiency, does that mean we have to hire another person or two to take care of that loss of efficiency?
I think you're going to, there's a wide spectrum of, going to be a wide spectrum of answers that you get on that, for, and it's going to depend on the position, what they do, and there's a, there's a schedule of vehicles, and I'm sure each department director that's responsible for them could report on that. Take the transportation, there's only one vehicle that we're talking about here, and that's for the director of transportation. It's a relatively expensive car as it stands, well, $17,000 value of the vehicle that Mr. Gordon drives. Is it appropriate for him to have a vehicle that he can take home or not, or is it just a benefit? I had a very helpful response to him, by no means I'm suggesting that he's being wasteful, but like I said, I think this might be a luxury benefit that we can not afford.
Can you speak to that, Mr. Andrews? And also to the point of selling vehicles as well?
I think it's a question of penny-wise, pound foolish in many respects. I'm authorized by code to have a city car. I don't have one. I chose not to have one. Or car allowance, I chose not to do that either. You know, but that's personal choice on my part. But I think, again, the assignments we've made by myself or by the department directors are made because we figured that these folks are on call 24/7, 356, 365, maybe.
365, yeah.
And, but again, it's a policy call, can we save $198, maybe, but what do we lose in efficiency in the process? So I think that's the, that's the calculus we have to work our way through.
And how about the sale of cars that Alderman Littman was talking about?
Well, I don't know how much you'd get for some of these cars, we talked about how old they were and decrepit and needed maintenance and so on, I'm not sure you'd get a whole lot of money for some of them, but David would be able to comment better than I.
I guess the fault in the thought about selling the cars is that they only use those cars to drive back and forth to work, and they don't use it during the workday. And at least for my guys, they absolutely use it during the workday, so just because they wouldn't be driving it home at night doesn't mean they don't need those cars during the day. So what you'd really be saving is the mileage, the gasoline usage for them to drive home and back, because they still need the vehicle during the day. We talked a little bit earlier about city staff that doesn't get overtime, overtime pay. All my supervisors don't get overtime pay, so they get comp time instead. So for those individuals, there's not a big benefit for them to come back to work during emergencies at night and on weekends, if they have to drive themselves. And some of them live fairly far away, so it's kind of an economic disadvantage. So that's, and that's not the main reason why they've been given the cars, but it's just my supervisors that have the take-home vehicles, and it's too, because they don't get overtime, all my other employees do, and so, you know, they get time and a half or double time to come in, so that, you know, they're rewarded for coming in, but supervisors don't get that. So that incentivizes them to be more responsive to emergencies, and most of them would be anyway. The third part of this is it's sort of become part of their whole compensation system, right? I mean, they came into those jobs and were promised they'd get take-home vehicles, it saves them a little bit of money for the drive home, so to take that away, you're really cutting their compensation package if you, if you take those away. It's interesting, when I came here from San Diego, we didn't have take-home vehicles in San Diego, just as a broad policy, nobody had take-home vehicles. So I came with the mindset that take-home vehicles don't make sense here either. But I've sort of changed my mind over time, just because I know that there would be a lot of unintended consequences if we take those away, as far as supervisor response and supervisor morale and all those types of things that really matter.
Okay. Alderman Littman, were you aware of what Mr. Jarrell has outlined here?
Yes.
And you remain with your amendment?
Yes.
Thank you.
Before we continue with the discussion for a second, I see Tammy in the background, I believe there's another meeting at 7:00, so before we move on this, and first of all, let me just say that I think this was very helpful. All of us remember the first budget meeting where we were voting at 1:30 in the morning, I'm glad we're doing all of this now. We should probably set up another one of these, and perhaps the Pitt Moir Rec Center, videotape it and then air it later, because the heat's very hot, but I think that will be appropriate for us to schedule in the future, but we have about 10 minutes till the next meeting starts.
This has been extremely helpful for me, considering I've missed a lot of the financial parts of this, so, thank you.
Alderman Budge?
One of the integral questions- One of the integral questions that gets tied up in take-home cars is how do they work with the Zipcar proposal?
Yes, some of them would, some of them would lose their take-home vehicles, because that's just not going to be, the cars are not going to be available after hours. That's part of the whole deal with Zipcars.
Right.
We use them during the day, and then they're available for usage at night. So a lot of those vehicles would not be available if we replaced them with Zipcars.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
Thank you. Ms. Alderman Littman, have you talked to the police about the benefits of take-home cars?
Well, as I said, I wasn't proposing that the police department's vehicles would be on my list of vehicles to eliminate.
Okay, because I thought I saw detectives' cars and some, okay. Well, good. Have you thought about the cost to the employees that we would be expected to reimburse for when they do use their cars? One of Mr. Gerald's gentlemen or women is coming in and gets called and diverted, then how do we handle the cost to the employee for the use of their personal vehicle for city business?
As with other jobs, they would be responsible for reporting to the workplace in their personal vehicle, and that's not an expense that they would seek reimbursement for. So when you get, when you have a personal vehicle that you're using for your job, that is an expense that you can get compensation for. But this is talking about eliminating the take-home portion. So the vehicles, if you're, if it's an employee that is primarily responsible for working at the water treatment plant, they would leave their car there overnight, their work car there, and drive their personal car home for the night and come back the next day.
Well, many of our employees in DNEP and, I suspect, in Public Works go straight from home to the site. They don't come here to City Hall first. They go to wherever they're going to inspect, or, so that's part of the productivity that's lost, because they then would have to come to some point, be it here or elsewhere, to pick up a car, as opposed to going straight to the location. So we're going to encourage, we're not going to let them come and, we're not going to let them go straight from home to the job site, if they're doing inspections, let's say. And if they do, we don't pay them for it.
So, two points. One, I would refer back to Mr. Andrews' reminder that we live in a mile, what is it, seven square miles? And two, that we have, the second point is that we have a lot more places to leave a car other than at City Hall. So again, if it's an employee that works typically at water treatment plant, there's a place to leave a car. We have various fire stations and wherever else that people can leave their car, so it makes the most sense for that person, that job. I think someone was trying to-
So would we be including a fleet control person to figure out where all these cars have been left all over the city?
I don't think it's that complicated.
Director Miller?
Regarding the, how employees get reimbursed, the IRS has specific guidelines relative to the reimbursement rate. That changes typically around the first of the year, each year. And then, for example, if you're commuting and take a detour on the way to work, so to speak, because you're going to work, you're paid the difference between going, so if you're a 30-mile commute and you go five miles out of your way, you get five miles of reimbursement. But there's strict oversight relative to that.
I'm very familiar with that, and I think it's like 55 cents, if I'm not mistaken.
I think right now it's .556, because I just submitted my mileage. I think it's .556.
Well, I guess this is getting to the root of my question is, have we calculated what it would cost us to reimburse employees? Not the fact that we would have to, I think that we would, but how do you balance what we would be paying them for the use of their own cars compared to?
I think that depends on how deep you make the cuts. So you want to look at, say, 10 cars, I bet you could find 10 cars to eliminate where you wouldn't have that expense at all, because these are people who can report to their station or report to where their car is parked and then use their vehicle, or their pool vehicle, and you wouldn't have that expense. The further cuts you go, the more that's going to be an issue.
I think to the 55 cents, jobs I've worked at in the past, the way it works is, your drive to and from work, you write that off on your taxes. And then the miles you actually drive within, you're reimbursed by the city. If it's not, all right, maybe it's not. So only when you're at work. Any other discussion? Alderman Arnett?
Well, this is a tough one, because I understand that this is part of the compensation. It's part of the incentive to work for the city, stay with the city. But this is the better part of a cent, one cent increase in property tax, and it is a sore point amongst constituents. You know, I don't get a car, nobody's giving me a car to drive around. I know that we made some major reductions in years past in terms of the number of cars and who got to take them home. I don't know, maybe it's time for us to take another examination of that and see if there's any more room. And I also don't know how we figure out the netting of both the transportation costs and the efficiency costs. I've always been a little wary of the efficiency cost, but certainly would be willing to see what the data are. So for me, while I'm entertained by this notion, I'm not ready, I don't think I have enough information to fully commit to it, but I do have enough information to say, I think this is something we need to explore once again, and look at what real savings there are here.
Any other discussion?
Alderman Budge?
I'll have what Alderman Arnett's having. I think that this is worth further study. I don't think that we would realize a full $250,000 in savings, but it's clear that we need to find some savings somewhere, and this seems like a reasonable rock to look under. And I would appreciate it if Alderman Littman could forward to us some of the material-
I just did it.
Thank you.
I saw it, thank you.
No, I sent one to you earlier, now I just sent it to the rest of you.
Got it.
Thanks.
Alderwoman Pindell Charles?
I'm going to vote no, but I would like some breakdown.
What was the last thing? No, but what?
I'm going to vote no, but I would like some breakdown.
Alderwoman Finlayson?
I'm going to vote no.
Alderman Littman?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby?
I'm going to stand up for a very good face, because I, no, I hear Mr. Gerald very loud and clear. I mean, it's an incentive for some of the people, and I think the directors will be able to trim down for which vehicles are expendable and which are valuable. The second part of that is we're not going to do this one percent crazy growth, or then we can take the car, do, we do a whole bunch for morale. So let's do some more research. Thanks.
Alderman Arnett?
So already said that I'd like time to explore this more deeply, but I do wonder why you want breakdowns for our automobiles, Rhonda? You said you wanted more breakdowns.
Well, some things, cost efficiency isn't necessarily going to be broken down, but I would like to see some, a little more expla, not a breakdown, an explanation.
And there was no pun intended there. Mayor Penney?
I'll say yes, but on the caveat of what Alderman Budge and Arnett said, I would like to see a little bit more information of how this would work, but I support it in principle. And it is 6:59, so let's talk about when we want to have our next meeting and where we would like to have it.
Tomorrow at 7:30.
What was the date Alderman Pindell Charles prepared?
The second. That, what time? 3 o'clock?
5 o'clock.
We have a Kingsport Community Association meeting at 6:00.
I fly in that morning. I have a death in my family, so I'm going to be in Boston. I come back that afternoon, so.
The one you suggested on the second?
Yeah.
I'm sure we'll be going until the time you get back.
Is it 6 o'clock? No, better start at 9:00.
Planning meets at 7:00? Well, we'll probably have to do it earlier in the day then. It's hard to meet everyone's schedules. So does June the 2nd at 3 o'clock work for everyone? No? Okay. Anyone else?
I'm trying to get there. Also, I need an excuse for my wife being so late. I'm good on, oh, no, I'm actually delivering a vote to Bermuda, from Bermuda.
All right.
No, actually, to Newport.
How about the next day on that, the 3rd, that Friday? Does that work for everyone? We'll do it earlier in the day then. We'll do it at 1, 2 o'clock. How about that?
I will.
Anytime. Sure, morning works.
I'll be on the scene.
All right. 9 o'clock on the 3rd?
Knock yourself out, folks. I'm going to be on the scene.
All right. And how about a venue change to the Pitt Moir Rec Center? And we'll make sure somebody videotapes it. I think they weren't available at the last one either. They weren't available on Thursday either.
We're not, we're not here today.
Mr. Andrews?
Mr. Mayor, for the record, based on your straw vote, you are now at $2.3 million without a way to pay for it.
So?
We've done phase two. We've only done phase one. Let's not put a damper on it.
So I would say this. One, I think this was very helpful. If anybody else has any additional amendments, please submit them, and the clerk can pass them around. But let's say Friday, 9:00 a.m.? All right. Like too close? I mean, I'm just going to say that, you know, there's a lot of priorities pulling us in different directions. The way I'm looking at my calendar now is whatever's on there is not important. I'm going to make time for this. So I just ask that people make a sacrifice on what they have going. And I understand if you're out of the country. I'm just saying, you know. Alls I've heard is excuses the entire time. I've been nothing but flexible. Yes. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Put it in my calendar now.